We'll bring the Pennington County Commission meeting of August 2nd to order. Would you please stand for a moment with silent reflection and then the pledge led by Commissioner Peterson. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on today is to review and approval of the agenda for today's meeting. Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. Commissioner.
Yes.
I would like to add a 21B, an executive session under personnel to discuss some ongoing changes in a department that we have. I promise I won't take up too much time.
Okay.
Ongoing changes?
Continuing changes. I don't know how to say it without... We had some recent changes at the head of one of our departments and we want to discuss.
Okay, but it is about qualifications and...
It's about a direction we want to go with filling that department head position. If we're going to go internally, externally, discussing some of the needs of the current employees that we have.
I don't think that's executive session.
Okay. I don't know where Jay is.
It's my opinion, I don't know if the state's attorney is here.
Well, let's put it on the agenda as a personnel issue and then give, have, have...
You can maybe explain it.
Sure, absolutely.
Get together with Jay and then have Jay advise us before we go into executive session.
That'll be perfect.
That'll be great.
All right. Thank you.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Need a motion for approval?
To approve the agenda as amended.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda for today's meeting as amended, discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Item five, review and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting July 19th.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I've been trying to interpret this particular issue or item. And I don't know whether it's eagerness or paranoia, but I see where Commissioner Holloway made and seconded his own motion.
But it passed unanimously.
Oh, but were you afraid you weren't going to get a second?
There you go.
It's hard not to be paranoid when everybody's after you. Okay, and I picked up on that too, and then I also picked up on the next one down, and it says move by Holloway and seconded by Troutman to reduce the extension operations budget to $10,000 and remove the funding for the .25 employee. That was, it was supposed to be reduced by, not to.
No, I think that's what it was though, wasn't it? It was reduced it to $10,000 for the operations budget.
Well, I want to know who seconded your motion.
I'm not sure who seconded that first.
Maybe it died for the lack of a second.
And so I think that motion, that second motion is correct. I think that's the way it was addressed.
Did you make the second on that first motion, or Don? On the budgetary, I think you did.
I, sure.
You can listen to the tape.
Okay. So, Don, that second motion would then, would that leave that 4H budget at the 78,000?
Yeah, whatever that.
Unless it's reconsidered.
Unless it's reconsidered, yeah.
Okay, so then the $10,000 part of it, what would that do to us?
It's the operations portion.
But it's still hooked into that 77,000 or whatever, total. Okay. Any other additions or corrections for the minutes?
Karen, you'll just listen to the tape and make that change on that motion.
Okay, we need a motion for the minutes.
The move is amended. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes of the last meeting as amended, discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Okay. Item six is items from the public. Is there anything from the public today that needs to be brought to the attention of the commission that's not on the agenda?
Still learning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're Ed and Kathy Cook. We're just, we've been going through a process we started four months ago, three, four months ago, where we're trying to get approval to put a small cabin on our property. We live out in West Hart Ranch. And we, it's just an efficiency type of a place that we're, we have a large family. When everybody comes home, there's not room in our home for everybody to sleep, so it's going to be used a couple, a couple weeks out of the year. We started the process, they told us everything that we needed. Aaron came out to look at our septic, decide whether we needed a holding tank. In short, basically, we came back in with the plans and it needed something additional done to it. And at that point, it had been a couple months and they told us that it would take, I said, is it going to take five days to get this permit? And they said, yes. And so, that's what they had said originally. So when I came back in, they said, well, now it has to go before the commissioners, and, but you need some additional things. So we went back to get our additional things, and when we came back in, they said there's a moratorium on any kind of efficiency, mother-in-law apartment type of situation. So we're just coming in as average citizens that are just frustrated with not understanding the whole process. We started the process, we tried to do everything we were supposed to do, we had the surveyors out, we had the contractors out, we had the, you know, the septic guy out, we had meetings with our water board and the electrician and the electric company and, you know, all this takes time to do. And then, after we have our time and money invested in it, they're telling us that it can't even possibly even go before you, or, or, you know, that there's been some type of a hold on it, even though we've started the process. So we're kind of frustrated with that.
Well, you got caught up right in the middle of a freeze on those type of building permits, why we put together possibly a new ordinance to cover it, and since you were started beforehand, and Dan, I want you to kind of come up and give us a heads up about what you have there.
Yeah, there's currently a moratorium, and what they have said is pretty much correct, just that there's currently a moratorium on, and they haven't applied for any building permits yet. So there's nothing actually submitted into our office for the guest house that they want to build. And the guest house ordinance is actually going in front of planning commission next Monday, so that's going to be the first time it's going to be heard by the public. And then, of course, after that, it'll have two hearings before it can be put into ordinance. And the moratorium, I cannot remember what date that went to. I think it's actually till November that the moratorium's into effect.
But were you aware of their, heading down that road to, to get that building permit, even though they hadn't applied for it yet?
I was not aware until about two weeks ago that they had attempted to apply for a building permit.
Okay, but how long ago were they dealing with our employees at the Pennington County?
I will have to find that out. I'm not exactly sure how long that's been going out.
We should have, should have that in.
Yeah, our first employee, your first employee was out on our property when the snow was flying in April. Aaron came out to work on our, you know, to look at our septic.
Your septic system, yes.
System, so it's been, we've been trying to understand and learn the process for three months and follow all the rules, and, you know, finally, it seemed like, okay, I think we have everything together again. Each time we came in, it was, okay, you're missing this, or, am I saying you guys did anything wrong? We're just very naive at this. But we've been at it, so we feel like we've been in the process, even though we didn't actually submit a, you know, an application. And it's really not a mother-in-law building in the sense of it doesn't have a kitchen or anything. The building's actually already built, it's at our neighbor's, he built it. It's a little 18 by 16 cabin that we just want to plop on for people to be able to sleep in when they're at our house. So Aaron's been out a couple of times. The first time was, I think, I'd say April, when it was snowing.
Right, and here's what's amazing of the whole thing, is the first time that he was out, it wasn't until literally a week ago that we realized that Aaron isn't even the one that we're supposed to have been talking to all this time, that he only approves the septic. And I've been to the desk a couple times, but I was not aware of that. I actually thought that he was the person that we were dealing with on the whole thing.
How big is this unit that you're thinking about?
Sixteen by eighteen.
Sixteen by eighteen?
Yeah.
And what about all of the setbacks and things of that?
We have all that actually in our...
That was all?
Yep, we have all of that. We've got the water application now, you know, with Dwayne Olson, who's doing the water. We've got the pine grove, you know, is approved doing, you know, we have to move our septic, I mean, our, not septic, the cistern, you know, but we have all of our setbacks, you know, at the more than 50 feet, and we've got the drawings as to where it, you know, where it's supposed to be, where it's going to be on the property, and how far the waste tank is, and the water line is, and, you know, that's what we've been kind of working on as we keep trying to understand the process. And a letter of intent. That's what we got together when we called and said, okay, we're ready, and they said there's a moratorium.
Nick, is Jay still out there, is he?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess I have a question in my mind, Dan, the, the ordinance that you're talking about, is that to regulate the kind of buildings and that sort of thing, or is that to regulate the use of the buildings in, in the guest house thing?
Well, you know, it'll probably do both. I mean, it's going to regulate size, it's going to regulate how it is used, and that it can't be rented, but that's all proposed. I mean, it is an actual ordinance, but that's what's proposed.
Oh, excuse me, but that, everything I heard you say relates to the use, not the structure itself and how, how it's built and where it's placed.
Well, it's actually, the guest house is living space, and so that is the structure, and it's also going to regulate proposably, I can't say it's going to because it isn't an ordinance yet, but it'll also regulate the size of the structure.
So if they said, okay, we're going to use it as a woodshed, we want a building permit, what would you say?
Then it's a storage shed, it isn't a guest house, and we would issue the building permit.
Jay, these folks started working towards a building permit for a guest house on their property back when the snow was still flying, and we don't, I don't have the exact date, but then they got caught up in the middle of the moratorium that we put into place to work on a new ordinance for guest houses. My philosophy is when they, if they already started, that they probably ought to be able to build it, but that's, I don't know, what's your thought from the legal side of it because of the moratorium and?
Was there, was there a building permit that had been issued to build that structure?
No, they, they started out with the septics and, and worked with, with them, the planning department on that, but I believe everybody had the notion that they were going down that road to apply for a building permit.
The building is already built.
Yeah, not on the property. It's just, it'll move onto the property, correct?
I don't know that, somebody have that answer? Was that a question from here?
No, no, I, I'm sorry, did you not hear me? The building is already built, it's just on a neighbor's property, he's who built it. It's a little log cabin, is all it is.
We don't want to know where it's at.
Okay, sorry.
Now we're starting a whole new kettle of worms.
Okay.
Typically, what triggers, I guess, a response to that question is if a building permit has been issued for that purpose. If there isn't any, I guess I'm going to stand here and say I don't think it fits. Till a building permit is issued, a moratorium was in place, and there was no, there was no official action by this board already authorizing that use, so...
But we wouldn't have to do that, this board wouldn't have to authorize that ordinarily.
Well, I mean, planning department. Planning department had issued a building permit, then as far as I know, there's no official bed and breakfast or whatever it is being built.
That's just a, we'll call it a mother-in-law's, mother-in-law's cabin or something on that effect, but I just, in my own mind, I just thought since they had already started the process and apparently planning and zoning knew that's the direction they were heading, then we should allow a building permit, but...
You know, if you, if you want to take a vote and three of you agree that that should happen, then you can do that. But as far as my opinion goes, I don't think officially that's the case, because until a building permit is issued, we don't have an official application for that purpose that fits under the zoning ordinance. Or applied for. But if the commission wants to make an exception for this particular property, I guess that's obviously your choice to do that.
And that's simply all we're asking for, because if we had understood that the first thing we should have done was, you know, made an application, and then you kind of start, you know, keep fixing everything, or, you know, answer all the things, we would have done that. We really didn't know until about four weeks ago that we actually even had to apply for it. You know, all these other things were just, things we're making sure that we had to have done, you know, to do it right and follow, you know, the rules that existed. So that is simply all we're asking for, is an exception, because we, you know, were in the process and just didn't understand that we had to, you know, make the application. We should have made the application, you know, months ago when we started.
The unfortunate thing is, we can't take the application until they have certain information, which includes the septic permit, so we couldn't have taken the application without the other information.
We actually, on June 28th, gave an application, but it was not complete, so it was given back to us to say, you know, you need some more of this filled out. We had our, you know, the Dwayne Olson, who's a licensed, you know, water person, do that, and so on June 28th, we, we tried to do that, but we just didn't have, again, you know, we didn't have all the information, so we took that back and then went to get more of the information.
That application they filled out, what does that mean?
That's the septic application he's talking about, not the building permit. I'm sorry, isn't that what you referenced? Was the septic application?
But, but what you're saying is that they have to have all this other stuff done before they can get, buy, or apply for the building permit.
Apply for the building permit, yes.
So then, to me, we still knew that's where they were headed.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Don.
Everything that you've done up to this point in time, you would have had to do if, if the moratorium, once a moratorium is taken off. So I don't think anything's been lost in your efforts to this date, and when the new ordinance gets enacted, if it does, then they can move forward.
That's correct. But by then, it's going to be into the winter, and we can't build, we can't put it in and dig and do everything in the winter. So this really is a one-year, you know, delay from, I guess, our perspective, unless we don't, and clearly, we don't understand the process.
Right, and the use that, you know, we tried to do this well ahead of time because we want it for Christmas, when our kids come. So the whole family's going to come home at Christmas, and, so then we really don't have the opportunity to use it again until they come back a year later. You know, we have five grown children, and they come home with all their families, and that's the whole objective of having it. So our surprise, when they told us after working on this for months, that, you know, we, we're going to have to wait to even see if we could get that application in till, you know, December, was a little bit surprising.
Dan, how, I mean, we're talking first of November for the moratorium to be lifted. Is there a possibility of that being any more quickly done?
Certainly, if everything goes as, if the planning commission likes the ordinance as proposed, and the county board likes it as proposed, it could be done as early as late September, I believe.
And then we move, remove it.
And then you could remove the moratorium.
We could remove the moratorium, but it's not on the agenda today.
That's what I was going to say.
To do that, so we couldn't legally do it today, we'd have to put it on the next commission meeting. And then, how many applications for building permits are we going to have come out of the woodwork when you remove the moratorium? We'd like to wind up like the billboard deal and wind up 17 more billboards before we got our eyes closed the first time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I totally sympathize with what you're saying, but also, I know that some of the reason that this was brought to us is that there are folks out there building, buildings for guest cabins that are larger than their homes, and they're not really being used as family guests. And so unfortunately, what happens, as in all kinds of laws, is you're getting kind of caught in something where people are abusing situations, and you get caught until we can bring some kind of order to what's going on. I, you know, I am really sorry that happened, but it is, there will be several requests if, if we take the moratorium off.
So if I understood what this gentleman said, he said you could make one exception, not removing the entire moratorium.
We certainly could, but then everyone will come in and want to have the exception.
Okay, sure. So the earliest you said would be October, late September, which puts us into October, which puts us into, okay. And so we have to somehow, I guess, just follow the process as to, and then as soon as that? Yeah, what is the process? We just work with your department? Yes. Okay, I can get your card. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? George?
Good morning. What a difference a few miles makes. If you're up in Meade County, you probably wouldn't be putting, putting up with this, you know? Just a few miles. With your permission, I'd like to share a few thank yous. I know that's unusual for, but if, with your permission, I, I have a few thank yous. Sure. First one is roughly a month ago, you folks followed the law and voted by roll call. I know it was a tedious, tedious process, every single motion, and I'm not sure the law intends that every single motion, like taking a break, requires a roll call vote, but, but thank you for following the law. It's, it's taken a while for the folks that sit in government or in authoritative positions to understand that the law applies to all of us. Now, I do have an open meetings violation, or thank you for saving me filing one against the Board of Commissioners. I did file one against another government authority, and one of your really good friends said, well, we, we haven't broken the law for so long, so just give us an excuse. I mean, that's, that's an excuse, we, we've been so good for so long, we don't have to follow the law. Anyway, your, your good buddy, Gail Holbrook, that was his, his comments. So I have an open meetings violation, but thank you, folks.
That wasn't, that wasn't anything to do with Pennington County, though? It had to do with some total, some other organization totally?
Well, unfortunately or fortunately, that organization is entirely within Painton County. So just like Rapid City is in Painton County, this group, a government-enabled group, is totally within Painton County. My second thank you is, the last meeting, you folks didn't take sides on Rapid City's government. Thank you, thank you, thank you. What business does this board have in taking sides with Keystone, or Hill City, or Wall, or New Underwood, or Rapid City? They're all islands within the county. This is the only government I have, thank goodness, at local level. You three folks sitting on my left, not my right, my left, have your own government. Third thank you is Ken, I thank you for starting the debate, I don't think it's over yet, on the composition of the Planning and Zoning Commission. At some point in time, as long as enough folks like me hang around, we'll eventually get planning and zoning, if we have planning and zoning, hit it so that we govern ourselves, so that folks from Hill City, and New Underwood, and Rapid City, New Underwood and Wall don't govern us. So thank you, Ken, for starting the debate. My fourth thank you is that a month ago, when you folks, the three folks on my left, voted against me to be on the planning commission, the more I thought about that, the more flattered I became, absolutely flattered, because you folks, you folks know my qualifications, you know my interests, and you're so afraid, you're so afraid of me, that you wouldn't let me sit with the other folks because you're afraid I might influence them. What a shameful, what a shameful thing we have in this country, when folks are afraid to put the most qualified people on the planning commission because they're afraid of what he or she might do.
Your opinion of your...
Thank you, excuse me, I have the floor. I have the floor.
Your opinion of yourself. Your opinion of yourself is a little higher than mine.
Ken, Robert, this board adopted Robert's rules, comments go through you, please. The last thank you I have for Mr. Peterson, I was taught as a youngster to refer to my elders as, as Mr. and Mr. Peterson. Here, a couple of weeks ago, I heard you say two magic words, and those two magic words were live under. You should not rule people if you don't live under the same rules. Several hundred years ago, we had a, a tea party because of live under. And those words, I'd never ever thought of them before, but thank you enough, I'd like to continue to use those words, if I may. So I thank you, and Sunday's paper, this guy in Meade County says, quote, "They'd have had us zoned up so tight, we couldn't have gone to the bathroom." Another guy, a rural rancher in Meade County, wasn't quoted, but he was paraphrased, argued that the zoning ordinance was poorly written and open to debatable interpretations. We just heard, just heard from two kind folks that had no idea what the hell they were up against, the nightmare that they're going through, because we have an ordinance that is debatable and, and open to interpretation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else write it from the public? Okay, go to item seven, the exit interview, Department of Legislative Audit, Bruce Heintz. Good morning, Bruce.
Good morning. How's everybody doing this morning?
We're moving right along.
Finished the audit finally. I was just going to go through the, the audit report with you. First thing I wanted to do is, everybody should have a couple of letters in the packet that I, I inserted. One of them is on Pennington County's letterhead. I need to get the chairperson's signature on that, autograph on that, or a letter of representation, I guess, that... Get some things in writing that we'll talk about during the course of the audit. And I've got the original copy of the 400,000. Next thing I'll talk about a little bit is the report itself. We don't have any written comments in the audit report, there's no findings. The things I want to discuss with you guys today is just oral things that are in this management letter, the other letter that I have, but the opinion letters are all clean, which means the financial statements are fairly presented, there was no... which means the financial statements are fairly presented, there was no breakdown, significant material breakdowns of their internal control process or anything, so the report is, is as good as it can get. There's no findings or question costs in regards to the grants or anything. So, the other thing, the next thing I want to talk to you a little bit about is the letter, the letter that, the other letter that's in the packet with our letterhead on it, on the second page. The letter broke down into three sections. The first part of the letter talks about the areas of communication that we're gonna make with you, as far as deficiencies of internal controls, any violations of statute, and any potential audit adjustments that we made to the financial statements. And as you look at the second page, about in the middle of the page, we had some problems with the Homeland Security Grant this year, some similar problems that we had a couple, three years ago. Don't feel they're significant enough or major enough to include as written findings in the audit report, but we feel enough to bring them to your attention and communicate them with you people. There's three areas of concern there, and I said these were with the Homeland Security Grant. One is the monitoring of subrecipients. With the Homeland Security Grant, you, you guys were the lead county, I believe, for this region out here. I'm not sure how many counties are involved in it, but anyway, as part of being the lead county, you guys pass on equipment, and sometimes you just reimburse the counties with cash or whatever after they've submitted the proper documentation for purchases they've made. But as a follow-up to that, if they bought equipment, they're supposed to be, when they get the equipment or the money, they're supposed to be made aware of the fact that it is grant money, and A-133 applies, and, and all the regulations that go along with the A-133. Because if they happen to receive over $500,000 in federal monies, then that triggers an audit on their end also. So it's not just your money, the money that Pennington County sends them, but if they receive other federal monies, and then in a given year, if that goes over $500,000, they're required to, to have their own audit performed by, by either our office or CPA firm. But there wasn't any monitoring of that being done, or any communications of that being done to the, to the entities that, that were receiving some of this federal assistance through Homeland Security. The other, one of the other requirements was a suspended and debarred requirement, and that one is any contracts that, that you have with a vendor that are over $25,000, you have to verify and make sure that that vendor has not been listed as a suspended or debarred company with the federal government, because you are not supposed to use federal money with any company that has been suspended or debarred. I, we haven't been, I haven't, I've never seen, seen one that has been suspended or barred. There is a list out there, I believe there's a website you can go to and look up and see if a specific company is on that list, and whether they've been suspended or debarred. So that's what that.
Mr. Chair, I just wanna make sure we clarify that that is for Homeland Security.
Yes, all these, yeah, all three of these.
Because sometimes, you know, people kinda think, oh, it's for everything.
No, this is any, well, that applies to any, any federal program, not just Homeland Security, so that's something that's, that's out there for any federal program, but that's, that was the, I guess, to back up a little bit, when we audited the federal grants, what we do is, is based on the fact that you guys are classified as a low-risk entity, we only have to test 25% of the dollars on your, on the schedule of federal funds. So then, then once that's decided, then we start classifying as major and Type A and Type B programs, which is based on the dollar threshold, and then we put the grants into a rotation. Like I said, three years ago, we looked at Homeland Security, and we had some similar problems like this three years ago. But that's how the cycle works, and, and so this year, again, was Homeland Security was, was the only grant, and I think we tested payment and lieu of tax money, was the other federal program we tested this year.
So Bruce, on that particular item, what you wanna see is just a copy of, of that website page in the file?
Some, some kind of indication, some kind of documentation, yeah. I, I'm not sure, something that would indicate that you did look it up and verify that this vendor is not, you know, what I've seen some, some entities do, I know that they were doing this up at the guard camp, on some of the contracts they had up there, but they had the, the contractor or the company sign a statement to the effect that they are not suspended or debarred. You know, just something from an internal control standpoint, that's kinda what we're looking at in all these, all these federal regulations, that what procedures are in place to, you know, limit the risk or eliminate the risk of, of some violation, because why don't you start having problems with these federal programs? And that was something else I'm gonna get into here, but if, if this gets elevated to a written finding, then that's gonna increase our audit time, we're gonna have to audit 50% of your grants instead of only 25%. And then the feds might turn around and say, you know, depending what the violations are, or the non-compliance issues are, they might even request you to pay some money back or something. I've never seen it happen, but it's, it's possible it could, you know? So that's what we're trying to do, is, is, you know, make sure all these controls and procedures are in place to make sure something like that doesn't happen, I guess, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, as the acting emergency management director, we, Alexa and I talked to Al Schaefer, Bruce's counterpart, this week about how to correct these things. They were brought forward about three years ago and identified. The previous emergency management director disregarded them and didn't put them into place. Their office has given us suggestions how to fix it, the one you were just talking about. We can incorporate that into our award letter, was one of the suggestions. And then Al Schaefer from Legislative Audit is sending us a form letter to use with the grant award to address the very first one, the subrecipient monitoring, and then the timesheet question, which he hasn't got to yet. We already started discussions with the auditor's office as to how to capture that, so it'll meet their requirements. I just wanna assure the commission that we've worked with Legislative Audit to correct these things that frankly should have been corrected two or three years ago, so thanks, Bruce.
Yeah, and then, he just touched on the timesheet issue, that's the start of the third page, I guess, is, is the allowable cost question we have. The, the timesheets didn't, didn't document, I guess, adequately for us, the amount of time that was being spent, I think it was by, I think it's just Alexa's time, I think, I think that's the only time that you can charge against the grant, but you need to be able, you know, she charges, charges her time to two or three different areas, while you've gotta be specific in what, which areas, you know, when you're working on the federal program to be able to charge the money back to the federal program. And that wasn't the case, I don't think, in the timesheets that we had looked at. And I said, like Tom said, we, Kevin said we had gone through some of that, and I think I've talked to KJ already, and, and it sounds like those timesheets have been, been coming in with the documentation and recording the time the way they should now, so. But the, the bigger thing is, if, you know, we'll follow up on this next year, and that's maybe something we should have done, you know, a little more three years ago, you know, when we did the 2007 audits, when this stuff was, came to our attention three years ago, and we should have followed up on it a little more, but at the time, everybody seemed to understand it, we thought it was gonna be followed up on, so we didn't look at it in 2008 when we came back. But we will follow up on it next year when we come back to make sure these things are, are, are being implemented and followed up on, and like I say, it, it could, it could elevate into a written comment, and then like I said, it adds more time on our end, because then all of a sudden, you guys aren't classified as a low-risk entity anymore because we have the written finding, and it, we have to test 50% of your federal dollars instead of only the 25%. So. On the third page, the other thing I wanted to talk to you about a little bit, was we had some problems in the State's Attorney's Office. There was a number of checks, 771 of them, I guess, that we got listed, that were collected over there that were not turned in to the Treasurer's Office, for whatever reason, we don't know for sure, but it represented about $142,000 of revenue that did not get reported on the financial statements and did not get brought over to the Treasurer and Auditor's Office till into 2011. So there's been, I, I've worked with Glenn and Sandy and the new administrator over there, Susan, and Jay, and, and we've looked at their procedures, we took a look at all their internal controls and their procedures, and, and the procedures all seem like they were functioning like they should, and, and the records seem like they were adequate. It was like the, the final step was not being performed to bring those checks over and, and deposit them with the Treasurer's Office. So as far as procedurally, everything seemed like it was adequate, and we had some, some similar issues with this, too, a few years ago, that we followed up on. They weren't to the extent of this one, this, this year, but we had followed up on it a couple, two, three years ago, and, and the problem seemed to be fixed at that time, and then, starting in sometime late in 2009, and then through 2010, it, it took off again, and we had another issue. So. I've talked to some of the other counties on, you know, some of the mental health billings, the checks, and the checks are starting to clear now on a regular basis. We'd been hearing some things from other counties that these checks that they had been sending for, for mental health had not cleared, and they were wondering why, and they had asked us, and we had done some checking, and, and since then, you know, I'm just working at Lawrence County right now, and, and their checks are clearing now, so procedures have been put in place and implemented, and they have made some changes over there to, to fix the problem, so.
If I could just briefly, I wanted to, I wanted to thank, Bruce has been tremendous in helping us with this issue. Also wanna thank the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office for their time. We've, it's unfortunate, the individual that's responsible for this frankly is no longer working for the State's Attorney's Office, and as Bruce mentioned, we have new people in place that have worked, at least initially, it seemed day and night with the Auditor's Office and the Treasurer's Office to correct this issue. We have a whole new set of policies and procedures that have been approved through Legislative Audit. You know, the commission, it's been shared with them, and you've been involved with that. So it's, it's an unfortunate situation, but the checks have been accounted for, and as Bruce mentioned, they're getting either reissued or deposited, and from that point forward, I think we have a, a great system and personnel in place that there shouldn't be an issue in the future. Unfortunately, it was, but I really appreciate, again, the efforts and, and help of Bruce and our own county departments in making a difference and correcting that, so just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good, Bruce?
Other than that, I don't have anything else, I guess. I, those are the only two issues, like I said, these aren't written findings, they don't go in the audit report, they're just discussed here. We have three levels of findings, I guess, oral things that are just discussed at the department head level that we don't feel are significant enough to bring to your attention, the stuff, the things that I discussed with you today that end up in this management letter, and then, like I said, the written findings, and we don't have any written findings, so that's a good thing when you don't have any written findings. So, other than that, oh, as far as our hours, our hours are gonna be up a little bit, I guess, because of the, the work we did over in the State's Attorney's Office, and also with the grants, the federal grants and stuff, we had some additional time in there and stuff, so if you see that the audit bill is a little higher than it was in past years, those are the reasons why, I guess, so.
But the state's gonna absorb that cost, aren't they, and they're?
Haven't you been paying attention to the budget problems we got? That's what the extra time, generating more revenue for the state, see, that's what I'm doing. But, anyway, I don't have anything else. Like I said, it was a good audit, good report, I'll thank Julie and her staff, and, and the Treasurer's Office with Janet and everybody, and, and the State's Attorney's Office with the help they gave us, and, and everybody else, this audit went, went fairly smooth, and nothing, nothing real major, and there's no written findings, it makes our job a little, a little easier, so. That's all I have, unless you have any other questions. Can I get that letter?
Need a motion to allow the chair's signature on this, on the letter?
I would make that motion.
Do we have a second? Apparently not. Motion died.
I have a second.
Well, now I might have a written comment. If I can't get the letter, we're gonna have to write a comment.
Is there discussion on this item? Yes, George? The guy behind you.
The extra money comes out of Brenner's budget, right?
The extra money?
Sure. For the audit money. No. A government, a bureaucrat makes a mistake, oopsie, no big deal, but these folks, if we're just this up here, they're just like the rest of us, rural folks, you're the only government we have, and we try to get a chance to live our lives the way we'd like to live them, and there's obstacles because of a bureaucrat or bureaucrats that don't live under the same rules. What the hell's wrong with our system? It's time for us, we the people, we the citizens, to get control of our government, starting, Brenner should take it out of his budget, whatever the extra money is, and he should be admonished for it. Thank you.
Is there further discussion about this item? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, motion carried. Tell Marty hello for me. Next week? You betcha. I'll be there, probably every morning. Morning, KJ.
Good morning.
Is it 9:15, young?
One of these days, we're gonna head right on time.
All right.
The first supplement we have is a posted supplement for $2,188 to the General Fund Juvenile Diversion Teen Court budget. This is from non-budgeted revenue received this year from donations, contributions. There was some youth in the juvenile, in the teen court that had been doing some, some volunteer work that they were then turned around and, and given a donation to. They'll be attending a conference, I think, next week, correct? And so in order to properly account for this, we account for it as revenue supplemented into the budget, and then they'll be able to subsequently spend it. We would ask that the motion today include the authorization of payment to the four attendees listed in the amount of $1,000. But the actual motion is for $2,188.
This is reimbursement for those people, or?
It's, it's to help them with their travel costs.
They haven't done, they haven't done the traveling yet?
No, they'll be traveling next week.
That's my motion, to supplement the General Fund Juvenile Diversion Teen Court budget from the current year, non-budgeted revenues, the amount of $2,188, and to approve travel vouchers for the conference attendees, the amount of $1,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Back to KJ, the Healthcare Trust Fund supplement.
The, the board is aware that we've had significant high claims in the Healthcare Trust Fund this year. We actually budget conservatively to receive $100,000 in stop-loss reimbursement, that's anything that goes over $50,000 in, in claims for the 12-month period, which runs from July to June. As of June 30th, we had received $1,429,674 in stop-loss. This money comes in directly from the stop-loss reimbursement and is subsequently spent right back out to pay the claim, so in order to account for it properly and not have an, an overspent budget, we'll need to supplement. I want to make it clear that we are not adding $1,300,000 in cash to the, the Healthcare Trust Fund, which is a long ways from that when it comes to cash right now. And I believe we'll probably have another one of these when we get close to the end of the year.
I'd make a motion to approve a supplement to the Healthcare Trust Fund budget in the amount of $1,329,674 from over-collected stop-loss reimbursement revenues.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there discussion from, on this item? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
The last supplement is a request to schedule a hearing for the General Fund John T. Vikurvich budget. This budget we've had for a number of years now, and receives its funding from donations from the Vikurvich Foundation. They have received a specific amount of $5,001.69 for the assistance in the development of the Mental Health Substance Abuse Collaborative and for the Crisis Care Center. So again, this is one of those that was not budgeted revenue, that will subsequently create a not budgeted expense, and to properly account for it, we'll post today and finalize this supplement on August 16th. Mr. Chair, I'd move to schedule a hearing at 9:15 a.m. on Tuesday, August 16th, 2011, to supplement the General Fund John T. Vikurvich budget in the amount of $5,001.69 from over-collected revenues.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, is there discussion from the public on this item? From the commission? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, KJ. Thank you, KJ.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is the truancy petition or position. And this involves an individual in our office by the name of Nicole Moore. And today, our director of the diversion program, Katie Urban, is present so she can answer some specific questions. But what's, I believe the commission received a letter from Mrs. Urban. And historically, the arrangement we've had is with the Rapid City School System. They've given us money to pay for this position, and they're going to continue to do that. Nicole has always been housed in our office because that's where the truancy program is run out of and all the support staff is there. Recently, and maybe Katie can address this in a little more detail, but the school system would rather just give us the money so that we can have that and pay her directly. So she would essentially become an employee of Pennington County. But as you see from your letter, the cost to Pennington County is zero. It's all school system money. And I'd probably, I'd be a little redundant here. I'll take some of the stage away from Katie if I went into all the details of what Nicole does, but she's extremely instrumental in operating and helping to run the entire truancy program, which has been a tremendous success in our community with the Rapid City School District. So our intention is to keep that going and continue to do the great things that that program's been doing. The only change being is that Nicole would become an employee of Pennington County, of the state's attorney's office. I don't know if you want, if you have any questions, perhaps you might want to listen to anything that Katie had to say first. But you, either one of us will be available for questions.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Jay, I'm curious, you, as you described this, you talked about the support staff. You, you mentioned Nicole and the 25,000, but you said she's housed, this person is housed in your office and something about support staff. And I guess my question is based on, is the support staff also paid by the Rapid City School District?
Now, the other support staff, I use that term generally because we have Katie, Sophia Yellowrobe, Cody, are the other employees of Pennington County that also have individual and independent roles from, from Nicole. But they all support one another in doing juvenile diversion programs, of course. I guess if you have a more specific response.
Just to go one step further, is this only with the Rapid City School System? Or do the other high schools in, in Pennington County have access to these kind of services?
Is Douglas involved in that as well?
We service schools in Hill City, Wall, Douglas, all of those. However, I handle those cases because she is just funded for the Rapid City Schools. However, that's actually a good question. I mean, if they're giving us the money, it's our employee, but generally her efforts are going to be for the Rapid City School District. That doesn't mean that we ignore the other schools. I just handle those cases.
Well, obviously, the Rapid City School System is the vast majority of any of our truancy cases we handle. So that's where that arrangement initiated.
We usually only have about two or three referrals from other small towns.
Do they, I'm sorry.
Go right in.
Do they pay us any money?
They do not.
So we're handling school truancy throughout the county? At county taxpayer, of course, schools are county taxpayers? I guess, I, I, that wasn't a question.
Well, that's.
If, if it's two or three cases, I guess I would say that that amounts to almost nothing, Commissioner Bus Group, but.
And that's the diversion program is we're trying to keep all kids out of court. And this is, truancy is just one facet of that.
Since, when did, when did the county take over truancy? When we took over juvenile diversion, is that?
No. You might be able to have my background on this.
That's why I thought I might walk up, Mr. Chair, if it's permissible.
Sure.
Not to weigh in on what your decision will be, but just to point out that it's, it's a little broader cooperative than just the school district and the state's attorney's office. The diversion program through the state attorney's office is authorized by statute through the court system. Katie's the employee in, in your state's attorney's office that does those diversion programs. Those are coordinated with court services. So I also have court service staff that work through the truancy issues. And the state cooperates and our funding goes to work on truancy. It's an important issue in the county. What you do with this decision is entirely your choice. But I just, in light of Commissioner Peterson's question, it's a, it's a broader scope than just the short discussion you were having, if that helps.
The reality of, of this issue is that this program and this individual's been doing this work, and we're simply changing that we have the money to pay her directly versus the school district. That's the only thing that's being requested and is different with regard to this position.
I know that the, the court system through court services has a truancy program. I'm wondering how these two programs mesh together.
The school, once a kid misses so many days of school, they make a referral to the state's attorney's office. And once it hits the state's attorney's office, court services, juvenile diversion, the prosecutor, we all meet to decide, should this kid be charged in formal court? Do they need to go through diversion? Or do they need to do some type of informal probation? The kids that have fewer days missed, we handle them in diversion and, and try and make sure they're getting back to school.
So is there another truancy program with the court system? Or is this the only truancy program?
If they aren't successful with diversion, then they could be charged in court and then put on probation or anything that the judge decides.
Could I ask Judge Davis? Because I thought there was another truancy program. Eraser?
Yes. It's in conjunction, there are different truancy protocols out there. What we've worked on developing within this county is the app now, which is in conjunction with the schools setting their standards for truancy and absences. Then the report comes in and it's staffed, as, as Katie has indicated. And we try to keep them in conjunction rather than competing. So that's the, that's the effort so that everyone's working towards that one common goal.
Is that currently, in state statute, the way it's sort of working now, that, that the state's attorney's office is basically in charge of truancy?
Mostly, Commissioner, yeah. And when I say mostly, it's under that broad umbrella of diversion and, and the authority that they have to try to work with youth before they're fully enmeshed in the system.
It's essentially a CHINS-related, technically umbrella of fence that can only be brought by the state's attorney's office. So that's how, if you really want to get technical under state law, how truancy falls under the state's attorney's gamut of authority, that's exactly it.
Then I have one other question, if I could. It has to do with the, the position grade that you're established. And you say you want this position to be the same as the teen court coordinator position, which is a 12A. Does everybody that work in that teen, in the diversion program, are they all under, are they all classified the same as a 12A?
Yes.
Including yourself?
Except for me.
Except for you?
Yes.
And you're classified as what?
As a school employee.
No.
I think maybe an 18.
An 18.
So you're not the teen court coordinator?
I'm the juvenile diversion coordinator.
Oh, okay.
And I have one more question. In your letter, you say it only makes sense to make her a county employee. Why does it make sense?
Because she's housed at our office and it's easier for her to take direction from me because she's right there and I'm the one handing her the cases versus.
But you do that currently?
Right.
So it doesn't make any difference?
It makes a difference. There's that. And then on top of that, she doesn't meet with the schools very often. She doesn't have a whole lot of contact with them. And she also, her pay, her position there was different. She was a clerical. She was hired for staff support only. And when she came over to us, as I put in my, or my letter, she kind of naturally evolved into doing more because the position ended up requiring more. We started new programming and that kind of thing. And so it made sense to change the position a little bit. And if she's with the schools, we couldn't do that because they only have so many position titles that that would fit under. And they couldn't move her into a different position and call her something else with the way.
But she's going to make the same amount of money?
Basically.
So, so all we're doing is giving her a better title?
No, she will be, she will be making more money with the county. Because, as I said, the position that she was at the schools, it was a level two secretary. And that position paid about $12 an hour. They could not find another position that was a higher wage for her because they didn't have anything that fit the description. They still had this $25,000 that they could give her because that was what the grant allowed. However, because they didn't have a position that paid it, they weren't able to give her more money. With the county, we can do that.
I understand. But you, now, you said that the 25,000 is a grant?
Yes.
For how long?
It's secured for this year. They've had the title and grant money for more than 20 years. It's been very stable. So we don't have any reason to believe that it's going to go away. If it did go away, we wouldn't be asking the commission for any more money. There, it's a very important position, in my opinion, and we would find another place to cut within diversion.
And that, that's, on that last point, I guess, I've had a conversation with Mr. Brenner on that as well. And he says it's not his intention to ever come to the commission asking to fund that. That's a school-funded position. And if for some very oddball reason the school funding ran out, which there's absolutely zero indication to suggest that'll happen, because this is a program that they want, and they've been funding it historically. But if that were to happen, we'd be looking at other positions or something to change internally to, to fund and not be asking for additional money for this position. And I guess I'd just like to weigh in on the question of, of what changes or why not just keep her at the school system. As Katie mentioned, she is classified in a category at the school district where they're more than willing to pay her more money, and they have the money set aside, but they don't have the position title for her. And I, I don't know all the details of that. But we can plug her in to a position that will allow them to give us the money to properly pay her for the job she's doing. So the money's there. They're more than willing and acknowledge her additional work that is needed in her position. And they have the money and want to pay us for it. So, and she's always been housed there and all of her direction and supervision is here. There's just been the pass-through with the school district for all these years, which is, I guess we're just correcting that.
The, the dollar amount that the school system is providing that covers for her health insurance, retirement, the county's side of the social security, is that correct?
What we figured was that she'd be working 32 hours a week during the school year. That's roughly about 41 weeks a year. She would have the summer off. She'd be working 32 hours. And with benefits, not health insurance, we didn't figure that because she does not want it. She has it through her husband. With benefits, that position would be $23,981. So there might even be a little excess from that 25.
The other thing you'd mentioned, Jay, was that if, if the funds went away from this, would it be the state's attorney's intent then to alleviate this position, terminate this position?
No, just, just the opposite. It'd be the state's attorney's position to keep this position, but find a different way to fund it internally. If that meant we had double up somehow, or maybe discontinue some service that is of lesser priority at that time. But I specifically had that conversation with Mr. Brenner because I knew that question would come up here today.
But when you say that, when you say we'll find it internally, your internal funds come from property tax.
But we would not be asking to fund that position.
Out of property tax?
We'd not be asking for additional money to fund that FTE.
Well, my.
I think, I think there's a difference, I guess, is what I would say.
Well, I don't think there is. I, I think, I think either, either, I mean, the only other place you're going to find the money, and granted, maybe you're going to not do some other things in your office, but it's going to then be funded by property tax dollars. Unless you, unless you find another grant somewhere. I mean, if that's what your intent.
That's true. That's, that's true.
That's what your intent is with it. And I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
No, you're right about, you're right about that. And of course, that's, that's one of those issues that no one can predict if that had ever happened. There are, there are many federal grants that have a sunset clause on them or a clear program for a specific time period. That's it. This is a, an issue that unfortunately will probably never go away in our community. And we'll always have a school system, we'll always have truancy, and we'll always be obligated to manage that program by statute. So.
Jay, now this, Katie, this money comes from a federal grant through the schools. After yesterday, I wouldn't bet on anything. And I have a real problem thinking that any, any federally funded function is safe after yesterday, including the United States military. And I, maybe I'm dead wrong, but I think we got enough employees. And I think this ought to stay with the school system. I, I think there's a lot of things here. But when you mentioned the sunset clause, I've never seen very many things that ever sunsetted. And I, I have a real problem with it, Jay. And you mentioned some, that if the money dried up from the feds, you tried to find some program to pay for it in a lesser priority. Well, if we have some programs there that are lesser priority, let's get rid of them now for this, this next budget year. I know I'm kind of putting you on the spot, but you're, you're just, you're just a messenger. So, go ahead, Nancy, you must have wanted.
Well, I was curious, this 25,000 that we're talking about, that's, that, if we really look at this, that is set aside for this upcoming school year?
Yes.
So, you know, maybe you could approve it for the upcoming school year and revisit it based on funding next summer.
Well, not significant.
You know, if, I mean, I understand what you're saying again. It's a little scary right now. But, but if the funding is there for the next year, maybe we could do it for a year and then see what happens.
Go ahead, Lindell.
This is kind of off the track that we're on at the present time, but I've gotten the impression that there are multiple juvenile programs with their own acronyms and all that. How many do we deal with here in Pennington County? How many programs that have the heading J, juvenile?
Within my office, juvenile diversion, we have teen court.
Well, and, and/or Judge Davis's realm?
I can only tell you what I have, which is teen court, truancy court. And then we have a juvenile diversion, which handles all of those things kind of combined in one. So the cases that don't fit with teen court or truancy court, I would handle.
So, so these are all under, or subject to some federal funding?
No. Those are funded through the county.
All three of them?
Yes.
And donations, and, and part of the supplement you just heard about was a, was a external donation.
We do get some grant money to support our teen court program as well from the South Dakota Highway Department for U.S.
I guess it's, you know, it's one of those things, Commissioner Peterson, as Commissioner Davis mentioned about maybe a lesser priority. I don't, I don't think there's anything in our, our juvenile diversion program that's of a lesser priority. It's all needed in Pennington County. I think we do an exceptional job. And Katie and her predecessor did an exceptional job. So I, I guess I would, I'm going to defend the juvenile diversion program and say it's, it's, it's much needed in our community. And we'd be way worse off and in a world of hurt if we didn't have it and the people that are doing it. So I, I don't think there's something. So I, I don't think there's something to cut here. I think the, the request is either have Nicole an employee, or if you're not comfortable doing that, I understand. Uh, then I guess we'd have to go back to the school system and say, uh, nothing's changed for now. The money's been earmarked for, for this school year, fall of eleven, spring of twelve. Uh, and maybe we'd revisit the issue next spring. I understand that, but I'm, I'm definitely gonna stand here and defend, defend our juvenile diversion program.
Well, and I would just like to say that Nicole, um, in our office has been huge. We've had, we had more than two hundred kids go through juvenile diversion last year. And only about six of them had to have formal charges. So we've kept those kids in school, which is taxpayer dollars because those go to funding the schools. If they're in the seat, they get more money. And with just clerical support, if I was just to have her do that, which is what the school title says, it would just be an overwhelming position for diversion because we have so many referrals and because the way they're changing, uh, the schools are changing how they refer to the state's attorney's office, uh, we're only having more. But the bigger picture is that, um, if we can get the kids to stay in school, which we have, the whole community is better for it.
Part of my problem is that we just heard the same arguments basically for 4H, that they keep kids out of your programs. And we cut them, and I know this isn't costing us any money, but every time we put a county employee on our list of county employees, somewhere down the line, that costs us money. But, I don't know, I don't matter to me, I guess.
Lindell, you-
Jay, I, I don't question the, the importance of intervention with juveniles. But sometimes we get trapped in, in a bureaucratic pattern that, that we're being led in a direction of rather where we spend half our time conforming to the requirements of a federal grant or whatever, when that energy could and should be directed toward the problem. And I, I guess I, I was exploring it to try to s- see if somewhere along the line uh, if we find a better way, a less bureaucratic way. And uh, I don't know how we get out of that whirlpool that we're in. But uh, listening to the auditor in the Homeland Security deal, we've almost outsmarted ourselves with our government.
Okay. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make a motion that we would put Nicole's request, or I mean Katie's request for Nicole's position into effect for one year. And that we would accept the twenty-five thousand dollars in payment for her position. And that, if that funding would go away, this, this position would no longer exist.
Do we have a second to that motion?
A second, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir. You have a gentleman behind you, dear Jayden.
I just got a question on this, that if we do this, are you making this person a county employee for one year?
One year.
Uh, I just got a question, was she have all the rights and privileges of a county employee if that money dries up? Would she be able to petition you people for?
Unemployment insurance?
Yeah, stuff like that.
Uh, healthcare if she decides to leave and somebody else comes on board?
That's correct, yes.
Retirement?
That's the question I got, you know?
Yep.
Will she, or will this just, her job goes away? That's the question, I, you know, I'm just, after yesterday, I'm a little concerned about any kind of grant.
My, my intent of the emotion, of the motion that I made was that if the funding doesn't come from the school district, then we don't have that position. It seems like that might be what we're most concerned about.
Well, yeah, I see, yeah, but I'm saying, that what I'm concerned about is now she's a county employee, the funds have dried up, and that, now, is, is the county stuck with unemployment insurance?
We probably would be, but we'd also be paying it in on her as well.
So, I guess that's, that's where I'm at, you know, I'm just asking that question.
Further discussion?
I understand, I thought the motion was to basically have her be an employee for one year.
One year.
Yeah, it's not, it's not indefinite.
Right.
It's just, it's just one, it's a one-year assignment, essentially, uh, as, as I understand the, the motion.
Basically, procedurally, at the timing that you're referring to, um, there will probably need to be a supplement for a portion of two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve. And when the board is initiating and working through the preliminary process of the two thousand and thirteen budget in May, June, uh, July of two thousand and twelve, they can address, include it in the budget discussions at that point.
So we would, and, and the school district should know by the time we're doing budget hearings in two thousand and twelve whether that funding is there? So then that, at that point, um, that would be Hollywood know?
Even work two thousand and twelve into the final budget numbers in September. So that it doesn't get lost, um, and, and it'll be addressed at that point for the, the two thousand and thirteen budget.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Okay, motion is carried four to one. Items from equalization.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a, an abatement application here that is uh, it is odd, there's a story behind this. We have a property that was owned by a disabled veteran who, who received a, an exemption from uh, uh, from property taxes because of the disabled veteran status. Uh, that essentially takes a hundred thousand dollars off of the, the tax roll on the property. Uh, the property sold, the new owner doesn't, uh, doesn't qualify for that exemption. So we add that one hundred thousand dollars of assessed value to the tax roll. When it was added, unfortunately, a mistake was made and a tax bill was created based upon the non-owner occupied levy. The, the new owner qualifies for owner occupied status and should receive it. We have all of that information. So now we have a problem. We've, we've added value to the tax roll based on non-owner occupied status, and it should be owner occupied. Uh, so we calculate the difference between uh, what it would be owner occupied versus what it would be non-owner occupied. We get that difference in taxes, and we work backwards and we come up with a value to abate. The only way we can fix this, the, the only way we can fix it is an abatement. Uh, so the, the value we're abating here means nothing other than that's what's gonna fix the difference in the taxes.
But the school system will continue to get the same amount of money distributed across the rest of the taxpayers in Pennington County, even though we remit this back to them?
So, it's a, uh, adding property to the two thousand and ten, pay eleven. So it's paid this year, and I don't understand the, the allocation of tax money enough to, to know if that's the case.
Guaranteed.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Shannon, is, is, did the new owner file the appropriate paperwork to get owner occupied?
Yes.
At the time?
Yes. Yeah, we have that. The new owner should be owner occupied.
But I think the key is that he filed his paperwork in appropriate time.
Yes.
Answer to that is yes.
Yes. Yep, the, the mistake happened when uh, uh, the addition was made and to create the tax bill, the wrong levy was used.
Okay, is further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move that the tax abatement for five hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-two cents be authorized.
Do we have a second? Did you second that, Nancy? Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heine, item from highway.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, first item is a award recommendation for rehabilitation of a bridge on Norris Peak Road. If you remember earlier this spring when the DOT was proposing the, the two thousand and twelve STIP or the new STIP, they wanted to move this into two thousand and twelve. I asked the commissioners to send a letter to secondary roads saying we needed this structure done uh, this year. And your letter done a lot of good, and I wanna thank you for that, we appreciate it. Uh, they did accept bids uh, to rehabilitate this structure. They received three bids. The lowest bid was submitted from Core Construction Services of Hermosa, Hermosa, South Dakota in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. It was approximately ten thousand thirty-one dollars below engineer's estimate. Uh, and this award is subject to approval uh, from the Pennington County Commissioners. Uh, we reviewed it and we would recommend that uh, you pass the attached resolution awarding the project to Core Construction Services of Hermosa, South Dakota. And the resolution is the last page of the, of what I submitted to you. Resolution number zero eight, zero two, two zero one one.
And, and do we need to authorize Ken's signature on that?
Yes, I suppose we should. The DOT is getting kinda critical that way, but.
Um, has this uh, company built bridges for Pennington County before?
Yes.
They have, and you're satisfied with things that are done, and?
Yep. They built the bridge on Palmer Creek Road, I believe, the one on the S-curves up in the, up in the hills, up by Hill City, and that turned out really well. They've done a box culvert for us in the past, so.
All right. Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve resolution zero eight, zero two, two zero eleven, eleven. Awarding project, I'm not gonna read those numbers. To Core Construction Services Hermosa in the amount of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents for bridge construction and rehabilitation. And authorize the signature on the bid award resolution of our commission chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
No, second.
Motion and a second discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Next item is award recommendation for aggregate stockpile. We advertised for bids for aggregate stockpile uh, in the Paulson Pit located ten miles north and five point five miles west of all. We received three bids. Uh, the lowest bid received was from Bob Bot Construction in an amount of a hundred and one thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we would uh, recommend awarding the bid to Bob Bot Construction of Pierce, South Dakota in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, seven hundred dollars. And the money for this is provided for in our two thousand and eleven budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, so discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Did you get a chance to look at the bridge yesterday, Heine?
Yes, I did, it is in Mead County.
It is in Mead, I thought it was, but I wasn't sure.
And it was patched. I went up there yesterday afternoon, they had just finished it because it was really fresh asphalt in the potholes, so.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, item twelve, items from weed and pest.
Morning.
Still is morning, I guess, yeah.
Still?
You're just not used to that.
Usually it's afternoon by the time I get up here.
Um, I think Holly mentioned that Chairman Davis wanted this Healthy Forest Act on the agenda. There'd been some emails forwarded from Sandy Massey with Congresswoman Noem's office suggesting that uh, the county commissioners may uh, be able to have a trump card on forcing the Forest Service on doing something with the pine beetles. I visited with Sandy and I asked her what she was alluding to, and she's like, well, I haven't read the act yet, but I heard somewhere where maybe the counties can do three hundred acres or something to force the Forest Service to do something, and three hundred acres and a half million acre problem isn't a whole lot, but uh, so I did some more follow-up and I visited with Tom Troxel and Wayne Bungee, who are both in the audience today. Uh, Wayne's name was mentioned on that email from Jerry Wright, and I think Jerry, in visiting with Wayne, kinda misunderstood what he was talking about. Um, and I visited with Bob Thompson, the Mystic Ranger District, and uh, Bob had made mention that, you know, we've kinda followed this Healthy Forest Act through the county uh, fire protection plan, uh, through Denny's office there, so. I, I think the main thing was make sure we're not missing something here on the Healthy Forest Act. And from the leads I've followed, it sounds like we've done everything, and there's, there isn't a magic pot of money sitting there that we can utilize. So, or to force the Forest Service to do something, so. Um, I guess I just, was there anything else you wanted? Holly kinda made mention you wanted that on the-
In years past, I remember a conversation about that Healthy Forest Act that the county commissioners could trump what the Forest Service is doing and, and-
Here's the act. And I kinda read through it, and I, I didn't see any special powers that the, that the county had anyways, that I could understand from it, and.
Have you discussed that with the state's attorney?
Um, no, I haven't. I could sure share this with, the document with him, and maybe he can read it another way. Thing of it is, I mean, there's weed and pest laws too, that trumps, so forcing the federal, federal lands to do something, but like they say, state law is state law, federal law still trumps it. You know, we could tie it up in court and be stuck here for ten, fifteen years tied up in court and spend a lot of money. So it's-
At least we'd be getting something done.
Well, I don't know, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then, item B, uh, I was hoping today would be the day that we'd finalize our mountain pine beetle plan. Um, and then last week, or about a week and a half, the state notified me that they've got some funding uh, now that they're gonna do some mountain pine beetle work, uh, throughout the hills. And uh, so instead of duplicating efforts, we wanna make sure we're working hand in hand here, so. I'm working so our plan works with their plan. Uh, they've kinda identified some priority areas uh, throughout the hills. Uh, there's several areas in Pennington County. And they're also gonna do a fifty-fifty cost share with the landowner. So we're talking doing a fifty-fifty cost share with the landowner. The state pays twenty-five percent of it, and the county pays twenty-five percent of it. That way, we extend our money further out and we can get more acres covered and controlled, so. We're working on that, uh, the state's coming up with an MOU. Um, so it'll, it'll be a coordinated effort, and hopefully in two weeks, on the sixteenth, we'll be ready to present a final plan in front of you guys, so. Just wanted to give you an update on that.
Mr. Chair, you know, Scott, maybe, I, I think one of the important things about that coordination effort is that um, there'll be some noticing sent out to private landowners. I think that's better than it might have been.
Yep, yep, the plan calls for direct mailings, uh, the state's gonna do direct mailings inside the priority areas. I'm actually working on the mailing list right now for them. And then outside the priority areas, the county will do a direct mailing, so. We're, we're probably gonna look at, not every landowner will probably do like a three acre limit. If you own three acres or more, you're gonna get a direct notice, and then there'll be the PSAs and stuff like that too, so. Yep, and we're, it sounds like we're gonna be able to do some buffers uh, on the Forest Service's side next to private land. Uh, how big a buffer, three hundred foot, maybe a thousand? Uh, but it sounds like we're, we're in the works of getting that agreement done to where if we're marking on private and we see pine beetles on the other side of the fence, we can go ahead and mark those trees and then get those trees out there as well, so. Better to protect a private landowner that way too, so, it's looking good.
Uh, to go along with that, and just so would Tom and Wayne and you are here, that um, last week, we had our Black Hills Association of County Commissioners meeting in Sturgis, and uh, this board brought up the fact that uh, uh, we were thinking about taking this real nice Christmas tree to Washington. And that uh, did pass the resolution with the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners. And also the state representative of the association was there. And there seems to be uh, talk about- association was there, and there seems to be, uh, talk about, uh, maybe we can go statewide and get some funds to do this and, and make it happen.
Good.
And also to find out, and maybe Tom or Wayne or you know, uh, where the new tree is coming from this year, has that been published yet? Nope.
Don't know yet.
Well, if you, if you find out, let us know, will you? Because they have a plan to just hook their front bumper of this truck onto the back bumper of that one and go wherever they're going.
There you go.
So. Anything else on this item?
I think for the, because people do actually watch this on TV when they can't sleep.
What was the board, yeah?
I'd just like to clarify that it's not, I don't, I don't believe it's the intent of this board to use ta- tax dollars to, um, send this brown Christmas tree to Washington, DC, that, that if, in fact, that actually, uh, comes to volition, it would come with donations from people who are interested in it. At least for my part, that's what I meant.
You're exactly right. Okay. Next item?
Um, just want to give you an West Nile virus update, uh, since four new board members, uh, you know, back in two thousand and three, we had the, the big outbreak in Pennington County and across the, across the nation and the state. Um, and then we implemented a, a West Nile prevention plan, protection. And, uh, when we started that plan, you know, I, I wanted to make sure it was a public health issue and not a nuisance plan, because once you start one, you're not getting out of it, and with it being a public health issue, um, as you can see, the last few years there, the cases have really dwindled down. Um, why? I mean, there's probably a lot of, I think part is immunity that the humans have built up and the birds, um, and plus, uh, the, the big spreader of the West Nile is the Culex tarsalis, and that thrives on drought conditions. So now that we're in flush wet years, we got the eighties vexin', which is the flood mosquito, which I think people are more apt to wear the insect repellent and stuff like that, because there's more mosquitoes out. But I have gotten quite a few calls just on the nuisance mosquitoes, wondering what the county was doing, and I informed them back in, uh, it was two thousand and nine, the Board of Commissioners said, "Look at any unmandated programs that you oversee, and if you can make cuts, do it." And I offered up West Nile, saying it's, it wasn't a mandated program, and we're on our downhill slide of it right now. It's kind of in remission. But I did tell the board at the time that if it does flare up again, we have the equipment now and the chemical to be back in business within a couple of days, so. Uh, it's kind of set that way, and I just wanted to give the board an update. Um, there is real no plan in place if West Nile did show up again. Um, I'm, I guess I would like some direction maybe on how you guys would like me to proceed on it. Uh, one thing I'd like to do is develop a, uh, weed and pest invasive species, a comprehensive plan for the county that would include, you know, noxious weeds and, uh, if Emerald Ashbore showed up here one day, or West Nile or another vector-borne disease. You know, this probably won't be the last one we deal with. Might be the last one I deal with, but my successor might be dealing with some unknown disease that's spread by mosquitoes, or who know, who knows what, so. Um, I guess, how would you guys like me to proceed? Any thoughts, ideas?
The input?
Uh, Mr. Chair, so this plan would become, can you flesh out what you're talking about?
Like a comprehensive plan, like, um, I've looked at a few that, you know, other states and counties have somewhat of a comprehensive plan, and just like, you know, there'd be a, a place in there on, uh, vector-borne diseases, what, what steps would it, would this weed and pest, weed and pest department play in that? What role would they play in it? So, you know, you, you could have some type of triggers in there if it showed up in the state at a threshold or at the county at a threshold, then you'd kick in or go in front of the commission and say, "Okay, we're, we're kind of at our threshold now, and do you guys want to proceed with a, with a spray program or a protection program?"
Personally, I, I think that would be a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Because you do have the guidelines set.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And, uh, you know, we could make it just specific to vector-borne, but I, I would like to do it encompassing, so my successor would have some kind of guideline on knowing where to go with, or what the job entails and what to look out for, I guess.
I would make a motion to support, um, the weed and pest, uh, director to put together a comprehensive plan, um, dealing with, um, the items that he has told us about here today.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. George?
I'd like to ask, Scott, it's probably, probably two...
Identify yourself, please.
George Farabee. The comprehensive plan be just for rural Pennington County or all Pennington County?
Probably all Pennington County.
And unfortunately, there's a jurisdiction problem. Thank you.
I guess...
I believe we have that probably taken care of, that we did have anyway. I don't presume we still have.
And I guess weed and pest laws do, I mean, we can do enforcements on weeds inside the city, we do enforcements, uh, in Hill City, so, I mean, there's, there is...
That, that part's changed. Years ago, leafy spurge and Canada thistle are a huge problem, have been for years and will probably continue to be, and before Scott's time, I asked the weed guy, "What about Hill City just loaded with spurge? No jurisdiction." Has state law changed?
Uh, it hasn't changed. It's, weed and pest laws clearly state, and when you asked, I...
And I may have asked you too, I know...
Yeah, and I called, and I double-checked with the, with the Department of Ag, and they said, "You have, just as, just like the sheriff has authority within municipalities, so does the weed and pest board." So I don't know.
So the, the city, the, the county does have some jurisdiction over cities?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further input? All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
And I don't know how fast I'll get this done, but I'll begin working, but it's not going to be overnight. It'll, it might be a while. Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. Holly?
I have a memo prepared for you today. We have a meeting conflict for our September twentieth regular Board of Commissioners meeting. It will occur during the two thousand and eleven county convention that's being held here in Rapid City, uh, which is Monday through Wednesday. The majority of us are attending, so I would like to find out what day or if you would like to reschedule our ma- our, our September twentieth Board of Commissioners meeting. And they've given you three options: Thursday, the September twenty-second, Friday, September twenty-third, or a week later, Sep- Tuesday, September twenty-seventh.
Chairman? Yes?
I, I think it would be beneficial to the convention if they would just come and watch us perform on the floor.
We could get the best of the county commissioning off the video and...
There you go.
Play it for them.
Well, I, I don't know where we want to go with this as far as moving the meeting, but I did say at the meeting the other day that, that, that September twentieth happens to be my birthday, so any gifts or refreshments would be appreciated.
I'd make a motion to move this September twentieth meeting to September twenty-seventh, just one week forward.
Second. Motion and a second, to move the meeting to the twenty-seventh of September from the twentieth discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item fourteen.
I got that one. Uh, in looking at, uh, department head raises and merit raises for next year, or this year, I see that our assistant, Holly Hennies, was on that list, and I was just, I inquired of her, is she considered a department head or an employee? And, because it makes quite a difference, right, at least right at the moment, of whether she gets a raise or not. At least a merit raise. And she considers herself an, and I think the Auditor's Office, as an employee, not a department head. So then I think that leads us down the road, if that's the case, to whether, uh, she should be included is a merit raise for, that I guess we gave all the other depart- a lot of other county employees.
Out of the years that I've been on the commission before, and I think probably when you were there, I don't think there was a department head that, or a, an office manager, um, until you came on board, that was really a department head. I think the rest of just, were employees, and I think that's the way they should remain. My thoughts about it.
I'd make a motion to, um, approve a merit ra- pay increase for Holly Hennies, effective, uh, Ju- July first, two thousand and eleven. At least my experience in working with Holly for the past six months, she's, she does an outstanding job. She's very responsive, uh, to requests for information, very efficient in her job, so I think she, it warrants her a merit raise.
I'll second that. And do we need something in there that says that that she will remain an employee of the Pennington County Commissioners? Uh, be part of that or not? What's...
Yeah.
Rather than a department head?
I don't know that she was ever designated as a department head, but she was just on that list for us to approve, and, and probably, uh, because she works directly for the county commission, uh, maybe in future years, we deal that, with that on an individual basis with her, rather than dealing with it at the same time we're looking at department heads and elected officials.
Okay. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item fifteen, Nancy, you had an item you wanted to bring up?
Yes, um, the commission received a letter dated July twenty-first from the Bureau of Land Management headquartered in Billings, Montana, from, uh, Jamie E. Connell. And the gist of the letter is that the Bureau of Land Management is going to, uh, submit through Interior Secretary Ken Salazar, a, uh, list of, of lands that are, um, are, what's the word? I lost it, sorry. That, that the Bureau of Land Management oversees, and they want to, uh, submit to Congress legislation designating wilderness on the BLM lands. And they're requesting that we put in our potential recommendations. And, and I thought it was interesting, the letter was dated July twenty-first, we have until August twelfth to respond to it. It's been the, um, oh, for many years, the, uh, Board of Commissioners stand that we do not support wilderness designations, and while there's really basically no Bureau of Land Management land within Pennington County that's being considered for this wilderness designation, I guess my frustration is, again, getting letters like this from the federal government relating to our lands within our border, and the fact that we really are just not given the consideration and courtesy to, to respond appropriately. We're given just such a short period of time, it's, it's if it really doesn't matter what we have to say. And it should matter what we have to say. So, um, I would like to respond to this gentleman with a letter just stating that they, uh, they need to be more aware of the proper process in dealing with us as a county, and that, um, they need to coordinate with us more when it comes to these types of designations of wilderness. And, um, I'm, I'm quite certain that none of the other counties were given this kind of consideration. This is definitely a form letter, and, uh, I'm sure counties throughout their region that they oversee, receive this same letter, and I think it is important that our county at least respond and say that this is not the way that they are supposed to handle that, and they are supposed to give us plenty of warning, they're supposed to work with us to look at whether there is the possibility of any kind of wilderness designation, what our feelings are on it, all that sort of thing. And so my, uh, motion would be that we would, uh, respond in letter form to this person at the Bureau of Land Management in Montana, reiterating that they need to follow Federal Land Management and Policy Act requirements, which say that they are to coordinate with county governments, and not just flippantly, because to me, it's flippantly giving us the token notice that only gives us a few weeks to respond, and if there had been any support for any kind of wilderness in designation on Bureau of Land Management's in Pennington County, this would have been completely inappropriate timing. And so that, my motion is that we respond with a letter that reminds them that they have a legal requirement to deal with this in a very different manner. So that's my motion.
We have a second? Second. We have motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I think, uh, you know, as you, as you look at this thing, and it's rooted in, uh, the twenty, twenty-first century conservation agenda and the ominous Public Lands Act and so on. The, uh, you can pick your land management agency in the federal government, and they all pattern, once somebody gets an idea like this, then they all pattern some activity within their agency that parallels it, and, and they're, they're nothing but bureaucracy builders. That's all they are. And I've, over the years, I've seen it happen in, in lots of federal departments that connect with agriculture in one way or another, and, um, it's, it's almost like smoke sifting through the cracks, if, if you want to call it that, uh, and it accomplishes little or nothing, it, to the benefit of the citizens, but it does maintain the staffing levels and even justify increases federally. So beyond, uh, Commissioner Troutman's motion, uh, I think we ought to make it very clear to our congressional delegation that, um, since this calls on them to do a congressional designation, I think we should advise them, we're not interested.
That could be, uh, part of the motion to add that to...
Certainly, make that connection and send this on to them.
Further discussion? Is that okay with you, Ron, as a second? Well, the only thing I, I'd have to say about this is that, um, first of all, the federal government can't run what they have now, and second of all, after yesterday, they probably are not going to have money enough to run anymore. And so I don't know why they should be allowed to tie up more land from public use, which they will do, and they'll say that they don't do. They have a real tendency to, um, say, "Oh, we, we won't do any of those things. You can still use the land all you want to, but pretty soon you can't take a vehicle into it. The only thing you can do is go in with a backpack. Uh, you're going to have noxious weeds, you're going to have the things that need to be taken care of, like the prairie dog issue. Uh, it's just going to continue to build on public lands, doing it the way they'd like to do it." And I think we've seen it in the Canada Basin, I think we've seen it down in, um, in Fall River County, uh, and the actions that the federal government has taken. They cannot control what they have now, they can't, they don't have enough money to, to do what they say they'll do, and besides that, that is land owned by the people of the United States of America, and it's not owned by the bureaucracy in the, in the federal Forest Service or the Bureau of Land Management, and, um, it's time for them to hit the road. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Items from the chair, I don't really have anything today. Would anybody want to make a motion to have a 10-minute break?
Some of it.
I was going to. You want to do it before or after the vouchers?
Well, I'd like to discuss that item on the vouchers.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
We have a motion and a second already, so you did it. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
What do you need?
We're back to work.
We don't need a motion.
Not anymore.
All right.
Hey, Ron, you wanted to talk a little bit about this item.
In the signature file is a notice of hire from the state's attorney's office, replacing, I'm not sure, what was Don's title over there, Jay?
I don't know, Office Administrative Assistant. I don't know the exact, by the auditor's standards, what that title's called.
But I see we want to hire, or maybe you already have, a 23, which is really higher than some chief deputies that we have in other offices. Is that job really a 23?
It's for our new office administrator.
Yeah?
I guess I don't have all the details to that, Commissioner. Would I say that her job is extremely involved, and is she extremely busy? Absolutely. If you have something you want me to get specifics on, I'd be glad to do that. But I guess I wasn't prepared. I don't know what the old grade was and what the new, you're saying it's 23. I don't know what the old grade was.
The answer may be coming.
I think there's some confusion, and I'll apologize, I don't have all the information. But when we're replacing...
Identify yourself, would you?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Nick, HR manager for the county. When the old office administrator left, there was a new one hired internally five months ago, six months ago. So I don't know, I think we're getting some, that position's been filled and is currently filled, so I don't know where the confusion is.
Ryan Rider?
Well, Ryan Rider is an attorney.
Well, that's not, hiring's made by possible... Okay, so he's an attorney?
Yeah. I thought you were talking about our office administrator.
Well, that's what, I guess that's what I thought. This hiring was made possible by the resignation of Don.
I think the intent to show there is Don was a long-term employee, 20-year employee, and this new office administrator was brought in at an A, a grade A. So maybe that's where he's just, I'm just guessing, but that's maybe where he's showing the difference in money savings could be.
There's no money savings, I guarantee it.
Yeah, is that what the connection is between hiring an attorney and...
I wouldn't have made that connection, so I...
I don't know. As I stand here, I'm not sure.
I could certainly gather some information, though.
Yeah, that'd be kind of neat.
I would like to make a motion and take that one out of the signature file until we get some more information on it for the next meeting.
Second. Motion and a second to take this item out of the signature file until the next meeting discussion.
Has that person already been hired?
Already been hired and started.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay. Well, at least we could get some clarification.
Okay, further discussion? At least it's not done under the radar. All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Now, do we need a motion for you to approve the vouchers?
Okay, the voucher list for today is $84,213.62. And it's...
No, that was in the signature file, not a voucher.
And this is basically utilities and cell phones and credit card bills, so...
Make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second to allow the chair's signature on the voucher list, discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, then we need a motion to go into a board of adjustments, huh?
Come on.
And a second, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carried. Go ahead, Dan.
Good morning, Dan Jenison, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, 11-09, for West River Electric, Ross Johnson, the agent. This is to reduce the minimum required side yard, side, front yard setback from 25 feet to four feet for the east property line, and reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet. And at the time, it was to increase the height from 35 feet to 50 feet for a structure, but it was in our ordinance, we found that utility poles don't need to meet the height requirements. So that doesn't need to be, or need a variance for the height. And this is for a future expansion of electrical substation in a limited ag zoning district. Staff is recommending denial of this, it is, as we believe it is, contrary to the zoning ordinance. However, if county board approves it, we recommend that three conditions be attached. It's located at the intersection of Reservoir Road and Longview Road in Rapid Valley. Involves 1.33 acres. They did obtain a variance at his zone, limited ag, which does require 10-acre lots. They did obtain a variance for the lot size back in '05, and a conditional use permit for a substation on this property. They are requesting to reduce that setback for the infrastructure for that utility substation in a number of locations. However, we just, this morning, received a change to some utility poles within it that would require this to be readadvertising unless you believe a utility pole doesn't need, because it is a utility pole that's changing location from the one that we got to along the north and south property lines. And it is going to be four feet from the property lines. We just received that this morning. And so now, we believe it should either be readad advertised, or unless you rule it as a utility pole and doesn't need to meet the setbacks, that's going to be up for discussion. So we believe it needs to be readad advertised for those differences in setback requirements.
Along every lot line is a utility easement. And obviously, none of them meet the setbacks, so is that where they put the poles usually?
Typically, in a normal lot, it's for minor drainage and utility easements, which is typically cable, TV, electrical, or that type of thing in a normal subdivision, a normal lot. This is a utility substation lot. I'm not sure if there's utility easements along this. If there is, you could consider that a utility. It is kind of the main use of the property. It's not like a utility providing use or electrical to a house. This is the utility, or a utility substation that's providing electrical for the whole neighborhood, so...
Dan, was, before the reconstruction of Reservoir Road and Longview, was there still issues of these setbacks? Would there have been prior to the reconstruction? Or would it have been qualifying underneath? Because everything's been widened and changed and...
This lot was just recently created, I believe, in back in '05.
But we have since then had changes on the roads out there.
Right, but when they platted it in '05, they granted additional right-of-way that was not previously granted. The plating requirement through the city of Rapid City required them to dedicate additional right-of-way. So I believe there's an additional 17 feet along that property line, as you see in that survey that you have in front of you.
Ross Johnson, West River Electric. When we replatted that, as Dan says, we did give up 17 feet, and then the county has left us a big wide front yard now because we can't do anything in there. I guess someday, maybe they'll widen it to four lanes.
Well, I don't know when we started requiring variance in the conditional use permits to put in a utility pole.
Well, it is a substation which requires a conditional use permit. It's not just that one utility, it's a whole substation, utility substation. And that does require a conditional use permits anywhere within Pennington County, other than heavy industrial and light industrial.
This, but it's a utility pole that basically we're worried about.
Well, if you, and that's why I brought it up, is that it's a matter of discussion as to whether or not you just, because it's just that pole that requires the change in the variance request. It's not the whole substation. There still need the variances for the structure, the, there's like a utility shed?
Control house.
Control house in the front. No, that's new. They will be putting that in new. That will require this variance. And then there was other structures that were six feet from that west property line.
There's several structures that support the transmission line coming into the substation.
You still need a variance for all of that, so there's no sense of just taking the pole out. Might as well all lumped in together in one variance, correct?
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that?
I said that this is one utility pole, but they have to have a variance to do the other, the substation. So what benefit would it be to take the pole out of the variance for the substation?
Well, they just submitted a change this morning that is a different property line, which was not part of this request, and that's why I'm stating that...
Can you show us how that's different?
Sure.
Because that's kind of hard for us to know where that changes.
You do not have the revised site plan that was just submitted this morning. The one you have is the one that we got with the initial application.
I could just figure out where it's different, so that I could look at it.
This right here is the site plan that you have in front of you. This is the new one we just got this morning, and it's... This pole right here, that changes.
Okay. Which would actually be nine feet from the side lot line.
Is it nine?
Yeah, the fence line is four feet in from the property line, and then the pole is five feet in from there.
Is it also the one on the other side?
Yes, same thing.
Yeah. They are not part of the previous site plan, right here.
Originally, the engineers had them planned in the back corners, and they've had to move them because of lightning protection.
Is this expanding that substation quite a bit?
We're just doubling the size of it, yes.
So we're going to have the neighbors coming in here shortly to complain about noise and electromagnetic interference with their...
We're actually, in the corner of this is our old existing substation, and we're doing, we've got our engineering firm doing a noise study there. So we know what the noise is now, and then we can do a study later to see if it's really changed. You know, we're curious, too. We want to have some basis there.
Where in that picture will this pole be?
So is this the location of it? Lot WR?
I don't know, is that...
And is that along one of the roads there?
Must be.
Going south?
Pardon me?
Is that along one of the roads going south, where it'll be?
What you're looking at is Reservoir Road, which goes north and south. And then Longview Road is to the north of the whole substation.
And this would be...
That's just...
Right on the south edge.
The adjoining property owner.
Dan, on this site, or this survey plot that we have in our book, where on this does it, is this...
If you see, along the very south property line, you can see the 199 point. That, it's kind of right in that area, right by the 1990, or 19, 199, sorry.
So Lot W there is where it's currently existing.
That's the existing substation, yes.
Do you have this on your little machine there?
No, I have this right here, which is... That's the existing substation in the very southeast corner of the property. The substation will be pretty much filling the whole lot, correct?
Correct.
You still have that little red thing in your hand that you tried to blind me with the other day?
I thought Holly was going to have hers here, so I didn't bring mine, so...
Tell me where the pole is going to be on that picture.
Oh, okay, sorry. The pole, I believe, is going to be right in this location here.
There and on the opposite end.
In here.
Two poles.
Quest utility building right here. This is Reservoir Road, Longview Road right here. This is all private property, but it'll be right in this location and in this location here.
What's those structures right there in the south corner, southeast corner?
That's the existing substation, which I believe is going to be removed.
It'll be removed once this is built.
Okay, and then go back to that again, would you? And then, right up at the intersection of Reservoir and Longview, that building right there?
That's the quest, that's not even part of this request, but that's the quest telephone building. But the other pole, there'll be one here and one here, the ones that got moved. They used to be over, are proposed to be in this location, and then here, they moved them to over in here.
And who owns all that property?
Jerry Olson.
So there are residences down on the, on the lower left of that subject property?
Yeah, this is a residence, and I believe this is a residence.
And across the street is a mobile home park?
No, these are all pretty much stick-built homes, I believe. Yeah, these are all stick-built.
I know what's going to happen.
Yes, Lindell. Ross, in your noise study, does that equipment or whatever sort out the difference between your noise and traffic noise?
I would assume that, I'm not familiar with it. I know they were going to do one, but I would assume that you would pick a quiet time, so you would have, you know, make sure the traffic wasn't coming and such, which you can do in that area fairly easily.
Well, you know, I guess if you don't bellyache about the traffic noise, why would you fuss about something else? Because there's a lot of traffic on those two roads.
Fifty-some years that substation's been there, I can't say that we've ever had any complaints about noise other than if something did violently happen there from a lightning strike or whatever, and something failed, that's pretty unusual.
So they currently have a conditional use or a variance on their current substation?
They have both a variance and a conditional use permit. The variance is for those, the lot size, and then the conditional use permit is for, actually, the new substation.
But their current substation looks like it's sitting pretty close to the lot lines, too.
Yes, I haven't measured that distance, but that is going to be removed.
Yeah, it sets the additional, about 17 feet back out, which will be taken care of when it's removed.
So, Dan, what you're saying is that you probably need two forms of a motion here, or maybe one motion with two ideas, and one is for the utility pole placement, then call it a utility pole, and the other is a variance for putting it next to the lot lines.
Yes, that's correct, yep.
Further discussion?
Well, I'll probably vote for it, because we need utilities. I just make sure that you keep that noise survey, because we'll be needing it in another year or two.
We have past history in the area.
I, the tie down south of town, yeah. I've been down that route before.
We're very aware of that. That's why we spec a lot different, a higher quality of equipment that is quieter.
And that is a switching station, too, versus this is just a...
A substation, yes. A substation, yes.
Okay, further discussion?
When the animals out there refuse to breed, as we heard before, on the last one, they'll be back, they'll be in.
All in favor of the variance motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Need to come out?
We need a motion. We have a motion. We need a second to come out of Board of Adjustment. Do you have a second? You did, didn't you?
I second it, sure.
Okay, we have a motion, and then a second discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Go to item B, Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan.
Approval of a payment. Sorry.
Go ahead.
This is just for projects that have already been done. It's just to get the participants their cost share to pay them for what they've already done. The original cost share application was approved by the Board of Commissioners on December 7th of 2010. This is for the reimbursement for those projects that have been done.
Okay, and the amount of $2,600.
That's correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve payment of, to the applicant discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item C is a Plan Unit Development Review 0607, Black Hills Resorts, Inc., Simran Park. Art Chankel has the agent to review a PUD that allows for a mobile home park. And Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension of this PUD with 20 conditions. This is an existing mobile home park that this is getting reviewed to make sure they're meeting their conditions of the PUD. They are, and staff also recommended approval of this PUD extension.
But we're adding a condition, right? About the camper?
Yes, there was something, there was a.
Okay.
Yeah, regarding a camper that was existing at the adoption of the PUD, this RV is being used as a residence on the property. And we believe the condition is, is that it go away once they're, once it's removed, they can't replace it with another camper.
I make a motion to approve the extension of Plan Unit Development 0607 with the 20 conditions, as recommended by staff.
Do we have a second? Second. We have a motion and a second discussion?
Originally, I assumed one of the conditions was not to have a camper. So they're in violation of that.
It, we believe it was existing at the time when they, because it appears that it's been there a very, very long time at the adoption of the original PUD. It just was not caught for some reason. So upon this review, it was noticed, and we believed we should address it so that to make sure that they don't replace it with another RV in the future.
Okay, further discussion? Did we, is everything okay with the septic system and things out there now? Was there any?
That was part of the reason why this was originally approved, or originally brought before county board. There was problems with the septic system. They have since put in new septic systems on this property.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Item D is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoning request 11-05, Robert Hammerquist to rezone 24.23 acres from general ag to limited ag. Planning Commission recommended to continue this rezon to the September 6th Board of Commissioners meeting.
That's my motion.
Here we have a motion and a second. What's the holdup on this thing? It's been?
They keep changing their legal description or changing the boundaries of where they want to plat. They make minor changes, which requires a new advertising. So it gets continued every time because of that. It's the applicant's request to have it continued.
Okay. And let's see, F goes along with that, don't they?
Yeah, E does, yes.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item E is in the same area, the same applicant, to rezone, it was 1106 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 11-04, to rezone 3.2, 3.24 acres from general ag to low-density residential district, and to amend the Comprehensive Plan to allow for the low-density residential district. Planning Commission recommended to continue this, both items, to the September 6th Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Item M is a subdivision regulation variance 11-04, Keith and Loan allow to waive plating requirements in order to create lots 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 of Laow subdivision. Planning Commission recommended to continue this sub break variance to the September 6th Board of Commissioners meeting. This is being continued, because they keep trying to come up with ways to actually get the property platted, to get what he wants. They come up with minor changes, and this is why it keeps getting continued.
Make a motion to approve the extension, just.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Item G is ordinance amendment 11-01, Pennington County, to add Section 317 Wind Energy Systems to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Planning Commission recommended to continue this to the August 16th Board of Commissioners meeting.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
Item H is Appeal of a Conditional Use Permit 11-19, Robert Mills, to allow for a home occupation, an auto farm tractor truck, boat restoration, and light maintenance on all vehicles in a suburban residential district. Planning Commission recommended to deny this CUP. This is located at the intersection of Pioneer Drive and West, East Highway 44, and involves 1.34 acres. He's requesting to do this as a home occupation, where all aspects of the business should be, or need to be located inside the enclosed structure of the property. Planning Commission felt that this wasn't appropriate for this area, and believe it wasn't in compliance with the zoning ordinance, and that it isn't typical of a residential area as a home occupation. And so it was denied, and a number of neighbors did show up in opposition of this. I talked to a few of them this morning. They said they weren't aware that this was on the agenda, and they are requesting that it be continued for two weeks in order so that they can be present at this meeting. However, it was discussed at Planning Commission that this could be appealed and could be at this meeting. So if you want to proceed or not.
Is your recommendation to approve it?
We recommended approval, as long as all aspects of the business are inside of an enclosed structure on the property. That means all aspects, including vehicles even waiting to be serviced would need to be inside the enclosed structure on the property, and that the property maintain a residential character.
I believe one of the Mills is here today. How long has it been that you've owned that property? This is the one kind of south towards Keystone?
No.
No, this is out in the valley on Highway 44, Robert Mills.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was mistaken it to the one up in Keystone, or on the road to Keystone. Sorry about that.
The issue that we've kind of got with this deal is, the complaint that we've been filed on, that they're having a big issue about, all of this was addressed in the first meeting on the very first time that we've ever been in here. It was all brought up, everybody acknowledged it, everybody on the board knew about it. But when the complaint was filed, then it completely changed over, and then everybody forgot about it. It was in the minutes, it was brought up, that what we do and how we do everything, and, I mean, and nobody had any objections about it. The very first meeting, we told everybody, we are a restoration shop, but we do light maintenance on the side once in a while. That's kind of how we keep our things going. Restoration, I mean, you can, you work on three, four projects at a time, and guys come up with so much money, and, I mean, once in a while they need a break, so we kind of bring in little things here and there. It ain't nothing huge, it ain't what we do full-time, but, I mean, everybody was aware of it. Mr. Cruz, the one that filed the complaint, he was, he even acknowledged the deal. I mean, he said, yeah, that's fine, let's see how it goes. We tried to get a copy of the minutes from the first meeting, and nobody would, we couldn't get it. He got one with his attorney, and the past meeting was basically proven to us that unless we hire an attorney, that we ain't going to get done what we, I mean, we ain't going to get nothing done.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
First of all, who did you request those minutes from?
From the county planning.
We have people sitting here who said they've never had that request brought to them. And they're also online, you're always able to access them there, but if you guys, I mean, unfortunately, that's not what we understand has happened.
I mean, we didn't get them regardless, so, I mean, but the thing about it is, is this whole thing was brought up on the very first meeting, and if you would have went through it and read through it, I mean, we're getting, we're getting beat on it, because you're telling us that it wasn't brought up.
Mr. Chairman, I happen to be at those meetings, and the distinct impression that I received is that this would be restoration of older vehicles. Now what we're being asked to do is say that restoration could be hail damage, it could be other things like that. We had a very different viewpoint about what was presented to us.
What restoration means?
Yeah, it's changed. Yeah, you've changed. And the reason that you're, I happen to live out there, go by there quite frequently, I see a lot of vehicles out there.
What time of day do you see them vehicles?
Oh, it varies. I mean, I go by many different times of the day.
I'd like to, any of you board members come out there, and I'd like to see a lot of vehicles out there during the day.
So.
I live there.
After hours, after hours, after five o'clock, we got family that comes over. You can take the license plate of every one of them vehicles, and I'll guarantee every one of them is a Mills.
And I mean, as far as?
The point I am making is that that was not what we originally considered restoration, because we were talked to about the older cars and so on. That was, it was never brought up, that you were going to be restoring damaged vehicles in accidents and so on.
Auto restoration, that is auto restoration.
That was brought up.
But that was not what you presented.
It was brought up in the first meeting.
Can I talk now?
Yes.
Okay, this was brought up. I've got people that'll witness it, that it was brought up at the first meeting when I got my conditional use permit. I come talk to you people, we did everything by the books. Mr. Cruz was at my place several times, he knew my operation. Another thing, we've got a little letter here that started this deal, it was probably 1st of April, that we had a customer that we had dealings with, that he threatened us that he wasn't going to pay his bill. So the last email we got from him, he said we'd be seeing his lawyers, and we would be out of business. And that car, to the day, is in Mr. Cruz's garage. And then to get back to the first meeting, it was said that we was going to do auto restoration, and in part of my job site, on the side, we do light maintenance on cross-country courier, and some of the customers that bring their cars in. And it was brought up at the first meeting.
I remember that, but that's not what I'm contesting.
But, okay.
What I am contesting is how the definition of restoration has changed from what you originally presented.
The, what do you mean the definition of restoration?
Okay.
That is the true definition of restoration.
But that is not what you told us. What you presented to us is that you would be restoring old vehicles. You did not say that you would be doing bodywork on.
Restoring.
That is not what you said.
We're not here to sit here and argue. I mean, it's like, you know, I come to you, got a permit, so we could do this the right way. I went to the bank, we borrowed basically ninety-seven thousand dollars to improve, clean up this place, I mean, I shouldn't say cleanup, to help improve it. And then we opened the doors on May 1, and then May 5, we're getting shutdown complaints, because we had not just antique cars in there. Well, that was brought up at the meeting that we did this, and nobody rejected it or complained about it. Mr. Cruz said that he was okay with it, that he would.
See how it went.
It's hard to know when Mr. Cruz isn't here, and I, from the discussion the other day, he wasn't okay with him.
It seems to me that somebody, we all need a copy of the minutes, so we can find out what was actually said, because nobody on the board can say.
There's absolutely no reason in this world why you can't get a copy of the minutes for that meeting.
And the minutes won't necessarily say exactly what was said at that meeting.
And what you do, if it doesn't, you can go back and get a disc that has that meeting on it, unless it's already been, how far back was it done?
We have copies of the minutes.
No information.
Not, we have not a disc, but we have a tape of the audio for the minutes.
What is your four-by-eight sign going to say on it?
Just All City Customs.
Just what?
All City Customs, and then a phone number. That's the name of the business.
All City?
All City Customs.
And our.
I'm not understanding, you wanted, Mr. Mills, would you say what your sign is going to say?
All City Customs.
Okay, got you.
And the sign is to Highway 44. There's nothing on the north, yeah, the north side of our building. We have got, 44 is within 100 feet of our building, and that's why, you know, they're complaining about traffic. Nancy says we've got too many cars around there. If you drive up and down 44, how many times has she drive up and down 44? I mean, and the people, the traffic, the truck traffic is terrible out there. But we're sitting here getting nitpicked on noise, and not having, I mean, and you're more than welcome to come out. If you think my place is cluttered, there's, I mean.
Yeah, the idea to me is that this was originally a home occupation, which I, it's almost unbelievable to me that we've expanded home occupation to include this kind of stuff. But now it's turning into a commercial. I think if you want this, you better try to rezone to commercial, because that's what it is. Call it what you want, but it's not a home occupation.
And I believe the suggestion here today by the Planning Commission, or Planning Department, is to postpone it, because, say that there were not conversation, that notified the neighbors that this meeting would be held today. I have my doubts about that, because I know that there, those things are said every time in the Planning Commission meeting, so we can go from there, however, whether you want to postpone it, or what you want to do.
I think the Planning Commission, at least in the note that I got here, is the Planning Commission recommends denial of conditional use permit.
Is that correct?
That's correct. They actually did deny it, and that decision was appealed. So county board has the final say in this case, if it's appealed.
I kind of have to agree with Commissioner Busker. It seems, would seem to me like this should be, the request should be to rezone that to commercial, and then that kind of a business would fit in.
Can't afford to change it to commercial out there.
Can't afford it?
We have to put in a street all the way up to our place, public utilities, water, sewer, drainage.
This property was requested to be rezoned a number of years ago. It was denied because access to the property is not paved, does not meet the requirements for a highway service or general commercial zoning district, which requires paved surface up to the driveway.
And the reason you have those regulations is, so when you have a commercial operation, they're.
Minimized dust.
Yeah, it minimizes dust, because of the additional traffic. The reason why this was done as a conditional use permit for a home occupation, and as I stated earlier, as long as they keep everything inside the enclosed structure on the property, then it reduces the impact to the neighborhood. And that's one of the conditions of, that was recommended by staff, is that everything be inside the enclosed structure on the property.
Do we have other businesses? Do we have other businesses like this operating?
There's a few that are out there in Pennington County that have been approved in the past. They're in some residential areas where, again, everything has to be inside of an enclosed structure on the property. And it usually is a one-man operation, at max two-man operation, where the traffic is minimal because they're not working on lots and lots of vehicles.
You know, I'm, I'm not asking for, you know, to, to run a, a full-blown, as Nancy said last meeting, is like a Midwest Tire or something like that. I mean, we're not there to do that. I mean, it's, I'm turning sixty years old, that's why we did this, is so I could slow down and just have a slow pace and stuff. And here we are, I mean, I'm not asking for an arm and a leg, we're just asking to let us do our business and...
The, the whole deal of having so many things noted on here for doing everything is because when, I mean, when we first did this deal, we thought we had everything covered. We thought we had our bases covered. And they said, "No," well, the second time, we figured we'd just list every single thing. That way we couldn't get picked on it because we've got something else in our parking lot. I mean, I had, I had a guy bring a pontoon that I welded up on. He was there for, I think overnight maybe, and then he picked it up next day. I mean, and that's what they was complaining about. Because we wasn't working on just a car.
And then since the first meeting, we have put up a seven-foot, eight-foot, or seven-foot, eight-foot, seven-foot, eight-inch fence, privacy fence, that we're working on finishing the gate and stuff for. And if you've been by there, then you should've seen the fence then. Because, I mean, that totally encloses everything, so, I mean, and it made the property even look better, even if there's nothing sitting in there. But everything's in a enclosed fence. Where here in another, hopefully, couple of weeks, you won't even know what's in there because the gate's gonna be shut, you won't see nothing. Because it, and it's a nice, it's made out of a, what do you call that, it's like a...
Like pearl-rib gal, galvanized tin?
Built, same as our building is built out of.
But if we happen to prove this with the conditions put into place, that's gonna be a vacant parking lot in there, right? There wouldn't be any vehicles out in that parking lot, everything's gonna be inside your building.
Well, we had to have holes for customer parking too, so, I mean, we've got some customer parking, there's three spots, four spots for customer parking.
But as far as the cars, you know, that's gonna be there or anything, no, it'll all be inside the fence where you can't even see it.
There, there will be no junk cars, no sitting cars for time or after time. I mean, that's just one thing about it. If, if we don't have room to get them in, I don't want them. Because then it just becomes a liability and then you start piling up more and more. And actually, to be honest with you, there isn't a lot of people out there right now that sit in line and ha, you have ten cars waiting in line with this stuff. I mean, it's pretty slim pickings right now. I mean, it's, a guy has to mind his Ps and Qs with them and, I mean, there is no list of cars sitting out front.
Further discussion? There's an emotion on the floor, is there? I would like to see, be able to see this, be able to be worked out. I don't know whether it can be or not. And I don't know whether, if we override the planning commission recommended for denial. That's what the appeal process is about. But if we did, I would like to see it reevaluated in six months to a year. And see that everything is, is taking place like they say it's supposed to. If that can be done, I don't know.
And that's the way we was supposed to be based on, on the first one that we got, it was supposed to be a one-year deal.
I don't have no problem with, I mean, if Dan wants to come by once a month even. Or I can, you know, we can email him pictures.
Dan, you're recommending the approval of the original conditional use permit and extension thereof.
This is a new request, they have another CUP that was just for the restoration. And the previous planning commission, they, it was brought up and they felt this was an expansion of the CUP and said, "Go through the whole advertising process, notify the neighbors, and come and phone another planning commission with this expanded use." Because before it was with the understanding, at least we all understood. And there's even a comment in the planning commission minutes that one of the commissioners asked. I, I am not necessarily in favor of this, but because it's just the restoration of older vehicles, that he felt it was appropriate to the area. So it was approved, that was the older CUP. That CUP, this is a new request, this is the one that was denied. And they approved the older one with the understanding that it was just restoration of older buildings, or older automobiles and vehicles, so...
When was that, when was that one approved, the older one?
December.
In December?
Dec, yeah.
And is it a one-year?
Or upon a complaint basis.
Or upon a complaint basis.
Yes. And we did receive complaints.
If we would agree to the denial of this by the planning commission, are they back to the old CUP then?
That was, I believe, continued last week to work out some other issues.
The old one?
I'm sorry?
The old.
Yeah, the old CUP was continued, or actually extended so that they worked out some other issues. But again, the, the neighbors, since they feel that they weren't notified, are asking to continue this to the next county board meeting, just...
Mr. Cruz was sitting outside just on the fence when we left, just kinda hanging around. I mean, he, he had plenty of time to be here and, I mean, he was plenty aware that what was gonna happen.
And we're not, like I said, we're not trying to be crooks or out of line. I mean, because, like I said, I come and did this the right way I thought I did. And, yeah, as Nancy said, I probably worded it wrong when we got our first conditional use permit, that's when we come back. And that's when everybody said that we should do it the other way.
Should just list everything.
And, and it's same token, we've had twenty, I think it was, what is it, twenty-three or twenty-eight letters we had to send out to the neighbors? And we only got two neighbors, which is actually one neighbor, because Mr. Cruz don't even live there. He lives on St. Pat Street. So it's his daughter-in-law that's the one that's giving the stink. We've had to call the sheriff because of harassment on my grandkids over this deal. Like I said, I didn't expect it to be this kind of deal.
Mr. Chair, the point is that you had it approved a certain way in December and within months, you, you totally changed what you said you were going to do. And that's the part that really bothers me because it would indicate to me that you really did intend to do something else all along. And that bothers me.
At the same token, it was just said, and Dan just even mentioned that it was brought up, that I did do, that it was mentioned in the meeting that I did do light maintenance and stuff, and there was nobody that objected on it. So, I mean, to me, I feel, Nancy, that I did not do nothing wrong.
You did, you expanded it from the original conditional use permit. And I'll say this again, and I'm not gonna say it again because you, you'll continue to argue and say it isn't true, but obviously it is. In the minutes, in December, it was approved based on the fact you were gonna restore old vehicles. Now we find that you've changed what auto restoration means. And it means doing other things, hail damage, collision damage, whatever. So it changed. And that is where I believe the cha, it makes it different. And becau, please let me finish. And because it makes it different, and you come in and you want a new CUP, I, I, I mean, I don't think that's right. Because you did it so closely, you, it's indicating to me that you really intended to do something different than what you told us in December.
No, I didn't.
Wow.
We indicated that what we was doing, we was upfront about it.
Everything was being...
Okay.
Dan, what's your next date? Yes, Lindell, go ahead.
Well, you get off dead center, I'm gonna make a motion to uphold the planning commission's denial.
I'll second that.
We'll have a motion in a second to uphold the planning commission denial, Lindell.
The, maybe I'm not looking in the right places, but where, where does it say in here that you recommend denial?
Right here.
On page six, where it says H.
Staff did not recommend a denial, planning commission recommended, or actually, planning commission denied the request.
It's on the, on where H is.
On the very first memorandum page.
Okay. I guess I, I just didn't, I was one page back, but within the, within the scope of this whole thing, if, if the bottom line is that you don't want anything outside that looks like some of the ones I see elsewhere with a bunch of cars parked around it, waiting to be serviced and all that, why do you care what goes on inside? What's, what's the problem? What, what public problem is being caused by whether you're fixing a rim on a car that hit the curb too hard? Or whether the car meets the qualifications of restore, something needing to be restored for historical purposes? And you, you might be sitting in there singing songs and who's, who's being bothered by that? I don't, I don't understand.
And see, that's the problem that we keep running into is, is, I mean, honestly, in all reality, we haven't bothered a single person on any of this stuff. To me, it seems to me it's a personal relationship between Mr. Cruz and the guy that tried suing me. It's just becoming a thorn and it's getting more and more and more. Basically, the last meeting, he had two attorneys show up with him. I mean, it, and it's proven to me that if a guy doesn't have an attorney, you're gonna drown.
And, and it's like you said, and we're in, in our own building and stuff and that's, that's the part that I don't understand. I mean, what makes a difference if we're working on a 2010 or a 1932 Model A? It's inside, it's out of sight?
Any, any idea why Mr. Cruz is so excited about this whole thing? What, I mean, does he...
Well, his personal relationship with this Greg Gruba, it's, they're best friends. And Greg Gruba, when we was, before we moved into this shop, he had an issue with his car. The way it started is, I had his car, have built on it for three years, it was gonna be a hundred thousand dollar car. When he started on it, the market and the cars was very, very good, I mean, they was worth the money. And in the last three years, they fell out so bad that he kinda lost interest. I had all of his parts in my paint booth ready to paint. I told him, called him up, I needed some money for paint materials, and he got mad. He completely threw off the handle, threatened me with attorneys and tried suing me and everything else. And I finally just made him take his car and go home. Soon as we moved into this new shop, his car shows up at Mr. Cruz's garage. And he told me, Mr. Gruba told me, when he, when he come, when he picked, when they, he would never come get his car from me. He made his friends come get it. But he emailed me a note that he wasn't done with this deal and that he would have an attorney take care of it. And it seems to me it's just becoming a bigger thorn and a bigger thorn. I mean, I'm not, we're not asking to have a huge commercial business here. I mean, we don't do a lot of foot traffic or car traffic in and out of there in the day. I mean, after hours, I got, we got lots of family and they all come over. I mean, that's, that's the extent of our traffic. And, I mean, they'd be there whether we was open for business or not.
Mr. Cruz, up until this car appeared in his garage and stuff, I mean, he used to come to my shop next door and even drink beer with us. And that's what I said, and, I mean, I don't, I don't understand, because, I mean, if you ever know, if Nancy knows where we're living at, right to the west of me, I've got one big problem, but I don't come and complain to the county and stuff. If you drive down Pioneer Drive, there's quite a bit more than needs to be processed besides what I've got. And, I mean, if anybody thinks my place is a dump, I get quite a few comments of how nice my place is. And that's what I said, I don't understand what, why we're getting slammed so much here. And we're not trying to reach out and ask for God, but it's kinda like, we're, this costs, this cost me a lot of money in the last probably two months. Because we gotta close shop, come down here, this is the third time now, plus all the stuff we gotta do in the meantime. Plus I put up a, well, I suppose it's probably twenty-five-hundred dollar fence.
Just to satisfy the neighbors.
And it just, I mean, we're not...
And the problem with this fence is, we put this fence up, it's hundred-and-fifty feet long, as much as the building is. And now that we've got the fence up, he's got all these projects at the end of the fence where he can see through it. I mean, it, it's just, for the last week and a half, he, he's, he's had to do this or that and he's always hanging out there so he can watch what we're doing. That last meeting, right after we left that last meeting, we went back to the shop and we had lunch, went back to the shop. And Mr. Cruz was out there trimming trees. He takes the tree branches, starts a fire, throws them, what, tree branches in his fire pit. It was so smoky in front of my shop, you couldn't see the fence in front of us. I mean, and, and, and he's complaining about noise and smoke that we make.
Thank you.
Further information on this item?
What, what's the motion?
The motion is, is to uphold the planning commission's recommended denial. Further discussion? Well, today, I'm gonna vote for this, but it might be for the reason to try and bring it back up again in the next meeting when these people show up and discuss your other plan, your other conditional use permit. I don't like to be a referee in anybody's fight. And I don't think that's what we're here for. And if that's what we're here for, I'd like to see something different happen. And I'm not gonna say I'm gonna support it with somebody one way or the other, but it's, the, the, being this vindictive is not the right thing to do, if that's the case.
But if this motion passes, this doesn't come back next commission meeting?
No, but it can be brought up again with, with the other conditional use permit that they already have.
Then it'll have to go back to the planning commission, wouldn't it?
And the one, the original conditional use permit is going back to planning commission.
Okay.
Not this one, this one is for the expansion. This'll be done.
But it could be reconsidered. It won't be done, or it, it, so, okay. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carried four to one.
So, can you tell us where this leaves us standing for work now?
You're back to your original conditional use permit.
So do we go back to doing what we was doing or, I mean, they could never say at the last meeting either. Just like they couldn't put a definition on restoration. They could not give us a boundary or a guideline. I mean, how do, how do you tell, make up your own definition?
And this is part of the reason why it was continued to get better for clarification of auto restoration. But I believe the understanding was is that they could only do restoration of the older vehicles as was approved with that original conditional use permit.
That's where you're at.
So if the, if the original deal in the minutes says that we worked on other stuff and, I mean, that's, that's the way I read it. I mean, the original one was, it was brought up and it was acknowledged in there, so...
My suggestion is that you work with Dan and get the, the proper discussion out of it as far as what that first conditional use permit allows you to do. Because that's not here today for discussion.
Well, if the original conditional use permit allows you to do everything he was asking us to approve again for, I don't know why we were here in the first place.
So obviously, what Don is saying is that the first conditional use permit did not give you... So, obviously, what Don is saying is that the first conditional use permit did not give you all of these abilities.
Okay. Thank you. Item a, Lindell.
April 20th.
You have all the answers for us, Jay?
Interesting research project, and I commend Dan for all of his efforts in trying to locate old ordinances and run, track people down that might have had some personal information about that back in the eighties and, and whatnot. But a little background information, I mean, one of the issues is this April 28th, 1982 reference. Where did that come from? What, what is that related to? How did it get in ordinance? And then what's its impact today, or its effect today? It's all kinda, I guess I have to start real briefly with the Supreme Court case of Pennington County versus Moore. Started, of course, right here in our circuit court. And what happened is the Moores bought some parcels back in seventy-nine and eighty and started operating a salvage yard for motor vehicles on that property. So, you gotta remember those dates, seventy-nine and eighty. In 1991, Pennington County brought a, a legal action against them, saying, "The ordinances in place at the time you guys started your operation forbid you to do that. It's illegal. You gotta stop." The circuit court upstairs here ruled that that's, the ordinance that was applicable to that legal action at that time is invalid, which of course, and I'll get to it in a minute, which logically suggests that maybe all the ordinances since that time were invalid. Because the underlying issue was that at the time, Pennington County started adopting an ordinance in 1970 and then amended it multiple times, as you can imagine, all the way to the, into the nineties at the time this decision was given. What they didn't do is they didn't have a valid comprehensive plan in place. And by statute at that time, you had to have a comprehensive plan and then you could start adopting ordinances. They didn't do that. And the attorney for the county at the time did the right thing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Buskerud, he did the right thing and acknowledged that, yes, technically, those things were not done. And did another thing that I think was appropriate, was he took proactive, proactive action here and said, "We know that regardless of how this Supreme Court decision turns out, we know we have to fix the ordinances or ordinance that we have in place." And so, what happened, this decision came down December of ninety-four. But during the penancy of that decision, the county was actively at work putting together temporary zoning controls, which are perfectly legal, and those were adopted in nineteen ninety-four, February first of nineteen ninety-four. Exactly two years later, the, a comprehensive plan and ordinance, according to law, were adopted, February first, nineteen ninety-six. That current ordinance has this nineteen eighty-two language in it. So, it's perfectly legal today to reference the, the April 28th, nineteen eighty-two date. There's nothing wrong with that. But now I wanna get into where that came about. In nineteen, in, in March, on March ninth of nineteen eighty-two, ordinance ten was adopted by the Pennington County Commission. And you know how it has, there's a delay in there before it becomes effective? Well, the effective date so happens to be April 28th, nineteen eighty-two. So, that's how that date came about. In July sixteenth of nineteen ninety-one, the Pennington County Commission at that time adopted the language that you see today, which is under section 401, sub-paragraph G and H. And both of those paragraphs cite the language that's at issue today, or the date that is at issue, April 28th, nineteen eighty-two. The only thing that Dan and I can, can put together and with the help of the prior director at that time is that the nineteen ninety-one county commission probably thought that they missed putting the G and H paragraphs in ordinance ten back in nineteen eighty-two. And they wanted those provisions to have been apart. If they would've thought about it, they would've done it, would've intended to do it, but they didn't think about it until nineteen ninety-one. So, that's why they, they cited in the nineteen ninety-one amendment, the April 28th, nineteen eighty-two date, and placed it in there. Now, if there wasn't a special reason to do that, everything would've been grandfathered in anyway. So, there had to be a special reason for doing that, and Dan's going to explain that to you in a minute. My purpose is to explain to you that referencing, there, there's this allegation that, well, when the Supreme Court decision came down in nineteen ninety-four, it wiped out all county ordinances. Well, technically, the only ordinances that were at issue were the ones that were affecting that property in nineteen seventy-nine and eighty. But the writing was on the wall, and that's what Mr. Buskerud rightfully noticed, that we need to correct this anyway and not wait for the next lawsuit to come. So, it was corrected. And today, we have an ordinance that was validly passed, that is not in violation of this Supreme Court rule, that so happens to have in it the reference to nineteen eighty-two. That's perfectly fine. There's nothing wrong with that. The nineteen ninety-one ordinance, had it been challenged, would it originally reference this? Of course, that would've been wrong because it hadn't been corrected yet. Wasn't corrected until nineteen ninety-four. But if you follow me, what I'm saying is, today, you can pass an ordinance that's, that's legal, which they did in nineteen ninety-four, referencing any date you want. That's not a problem. So, the nineteen eighty-two reference itself is, is truly not an issue. Had it not been corrected as, as it did in nineteen ninety-four, it wouldn't be valid. But it is valid today. That's my point. Dan can explain to you what that means today. And, and so, I think I've, we've discerned where that came from, why it was there, and that it's now been adopted in a, in a more recent, the nineteen ninety-four, temporary controls and comprehensive plan and ordinance. And it exists today and it's valid today. So, I'll turn it over to Dan to explain how it's, what impact that date has on today's property.
Well, there's three places in our current ordinance that references April 28th. You have that memo in front of you. One's in regards to developmental lot. It's the definition of a developmental lot, where they can basically ignore an interior lot line. If they have two lots that are, are smaller than what that zoning district in which they are located, say it's a five-acre lot in a, a general ag zoning district. If that lot was created prior to this April 28th, nineteen eighty-two date, it's considered a lot for which we could issue a building permit on. Based upon, you know, even if it doesn't meet the criteria for a general ag zoning district, we can issue a building permit for it. Or if there's two lots next to each other and they've always been owned by the same owner, and they can ignore that interior lot line as long as the two lots combined are less than what the general ag zoning district requires. So, that's like, it's a ten-acre lot, but there's two five-acre lots and it's zoned general ag. The lots have always been under the same ownership. They can be different owners that own the two lots together, and they can sell it to the next person as basically one lot. Then they can ignore that interior lot line, and they can build a structure over that lot line. They can act as if it's not there. One is also, if it's a five-acre lot, it's just a five-acre lot and they, it's zoned general ag in the same case, which requires forty acres. If it was created prior to this April 28th, nineteen eighty-two date, we can issue a building permit based upon that it was created prior to April 28th. And they still have to meet the intent of that zoning district for which it is located, and we could issue a building permit.
So, it's really to the benefit of the people out there trying to do something, as long as their lot, and they had ownership prior to the April of eighty-two date?
That's correct. It actually helps the public.
To their benefit?
Yes.
Reddell?
The scenario that you described, I'm not arguing with you. I'm arguing with our position. If you've got two five-acre lots and, and if somebody owned them prior to nineteen eighty-two and wanted to build on them, you could ignore the lot line, interior lot line, right?
If he owned both lots, yes.
Yeah. So, looking again at protecting the public and a public issue, what difference does it make whether you owned it in nineteen eighty-two or two thousand and two?
Well, in two thousand and two, they should've met the requirements of our zoning ordinance and have it zoned correctly. If it's a five-acre lot, should've been zoned low density residential or, and it shouldn't have been created without meeting the requirements of our zoning ordinance.
And, and just for, I, I know it might be hard for you to step outside of what's on, on the books in terms of what, what we currently have is regulations and ordinances and all that stuff. But in a, in a direct sense, whether, you know, if it's ten acres and it's in a general ag deal, what public problem is created by when it was owned? Or what public problem goes away if it was owned within a certain time? I, I just can't grasp why we're protecting ourselves from ourselves or something. It, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, it has to do with zoning. I mean, the county, back in, I believe, nineteen sixty-seven, they initially did zoning for, well, adopted the zoning ordinance for Pennington County. I believe it was nineteen seventy-something, they zoned all of Pennington County. And that was the commissioners who zoned all of Pennington County. They went through and, and classified all of Pennington County outside of incorporated limits into different zoning districts. Basically, to say, "This area is appropriate for this. This area is appropriate for general ag. This area is appropriate for a limited ag. This is, should be suburban residential district." Based upon sometimes what the use was there in close proximity to municipalities or, you know, access, all those different types of things. You know, density controls a lot of different things. You know, the higher density, the more better infrastructure you should have to that development or that area. General ag is gonna have probably not as good a roads as, say, are not necessarily good a roads, but a wider road, which is gonna provide for more people to travel on or better access to the, to these areas. So, to, the more limited ag is gonna have higher density. So, you'd need better infrastructure to that area where more and more people are gonna be driving on that. So, you should have better infrastructure to that area.
I understand all that, but I, I, I guess we're probably not gonna get at my basic premise. And part of what you said, for some reason, reminded me that when I grew up at Quinn, we used, we used to go to Philip. And the highway between Cottonwood and Philip, the, the old highway, was very winding. Lots of curves, lots of accidents. And it followed the old wagon trails. And when they laid it out, they really didn't want it built there, but, but they went ahead and did it anyway. Well, over the years, highways have been changed and moved and straightened out and all that stuff. And there's old bridges hanging out and pastures and everything else. Those were kinda what I call public purposes, and they probably saved some lives. But, but it absolutely boggles my mind that, that we worry about when a piece of land was bought as it relates to what purpose we allow to happen on it. Why are we worried about a date?
That's a great question. And that's, that's one that Dan and I mauled over for, it seemed like, hours, trying to figure out what, what was the significance of this date. And there's no other answer, really, I think, to your question, other than in March of eighty-two, the folks setting technically right where you are thought it was significant.
If we erase it by an action of this board, what, what dilemma will occur?
Well, you, you could, for instance, well, the folks prior to that are grandfathered in with that. You, you create a new, a new ordinance that takes away those rights, so they're, they're grandfathered in. You could change this date if you wanted to make everybody from April 29th of nineteen eighty-two to the present. You could pass an ordinance and say, from the present, anybody behind the present gets the same benefit. You could do that. You could grant more, but you're not gonna be able to take away that grandfathered right.
I wouldn't want to.
So, yeah, you could change, if you want this fall, you know, we're talking about doing some ordinance revisions, maybe propose one to change that date from April 28th, nineteen eighty-two to December first, 2011.
Wouldn't wanna put the Supreme Court out of work, but.
You know, that way, everybody in the interim gets the same benefit.
So, let me ask you a question. We'll say Lindell has two five-acre parcel of land. He's owed them, owned them since nineteen sixty. And he builds a house across the lot line. Someday, he decides he wants to sell it, so I come along and I buy it. Now, I've got a house setting across the lot line. He was grandfathered in, but I'm not. Now, I'm in violation.
The property is grandfathered in. I don't care who, the, the property is grandfathered in. I don't care who owns it.
As soon as I, as soon as I buy it and wanna build a garage, now I'm in violation.
No, you would not be.
Why not? Because that's, that's how you work in everything else.
No, as long as both lots are under one ownership?
But, but when I buy them, now we're not under one ownership.
No, you, you would have bought both lots. You would be buying both lots.
That originated in that configuration prior to nineteen eighty-two, and that continues till that's changed.
Okay, but so then, why are we, why are we requiring people to go out and get conditional use permits and variances, and all of the variances that we're doing for the exact same thing what you're talking about right here? Because they, they had something on their property that when the county changed the zoning ordinances, they put them in violation, and now they gotta go out and spend a bunch of money to get it taken care of. That's exactly what this is.
This is lot size only. That's what this is referring to, is lot size.
Yeah.
It's not, not use.
But as soon as, but as soon as I go out and, and buy it and wanna build a garage, that's what they were doing, all of these other variances about. It's the same thing.
Only if those lots were created after nineteen eighty-two.
What's that again?
If the lot was created after this April nineteen eighty-two date and they wanted to change the lot, then they would need to go through the variance process or, or rezone the property or replat the property. If it was created after this April 28th, nineteen eighty-two date. If it was created prior to that, there'd be no violation or, they wouldn't have, they, it's not.
The, the commission was, at that time, was bestowing upon individuals that owned property in that configuration special privileges. And the commission, all the way through February first of nineteen ninety-six, also agreed that that same level of privilege should be bestowed on them. So, for years and years and years, commissioners thought, "We like that idea." I wasn't around for the discussion. I don't know what was talked about, but.
Well, I was, but I wasn't in part, I wasn't sitting in the legal part of it, and I wasn't down in pure, front of the Supreme Court like Commissioner Buskerud was, but.
That was ugly.
Yeah.
I might add.
Mr. Chair?
I was chair of the planning commission about that time. Go ahead.
Can I ask, so if we removed, changed the April 28th, nineteen eighty-two, um, date, what, what effect overall would it have? Can we be real specific about that?
Well, if you changed it to a earlier date, let's say, February first, nineteen ninety-four, if you wanted to do that, it would basically bring those lots that were created in between April 28th, nineteen eighty-two, and whenever you change the date to, the same privileges as granted with this, these three right here.
Would there be disadvantages to changing the date?
I don't believe so, other than, you know, those lots, you know, there was ordinances somewhat and, and they were acting upon ordinances between eighty-two and nineteen ninety-four. They weren't technically legal, but they were acting upon them, and that's, you know, so they believed that they should have been in compliance with those. so they believed that they should have been in compliance with those zoning ordinances at that time.
George is behind it, he has something he wants to say.
Thank you. Can I ask a question before I comment?
I don't know whether I can answer it or not.
Well, I mean, of, of the history lesson, did I hear right, 1991 amendment or 1991 ordinance? Did I hear that?
In regards to what, George?
In your spiel, I, I think I heard 1991, and, and you'll have to forgive me, I'm, I'm a little older than you are, and maybe I didn't hear it right. Okay. Thank you. I listened to the, the chronology, and, and I also listened to the Pennington County versus Moore, Moore case. And I guess there's difference of, of opinion, a difference of conclusions, I shouldn't even say opinion. The history lesson or the chronology that I got from my research was that the Pennington County Commission adopted a comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance way back when. The dates are relevant at this point. What's relevant is in 1990, roughly one or two, a citizen brought his suit, or, may back up. The county prosecuted a citizen for violation of an ordinance, comprehensive plan and ordinance. The county prosecuted, and the individual didn't roll over, the individual challenged in court and won. Won at District Court, won at Supreme Court. That's the chronology that I, and I don't know about 1991. The Supreme Court case, as I read, Pennington County versus Moore, says that the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance and subdivision regulation, which by law are the only two subsets you can have of the comprehensive plan, they are declared invalid. Now, nowhere in that opinion, except maybe between the lines, can you read that it was just against Moore? Or just to the benefit of Moore? The Supreme Court said, Pennington County, you, you don't have an ordinance for anybody. So everything preceding the December 1994 decision is null and void, you got to start over. Now, let me digress at that point to support my conclusion of what the Supreme Court said in the opinion. Obviously, I wasn't there, I guess Ron did, well, Ron heard some of their comments probably. I'll try to make it as simple as I can. This ordinance, this isn't the, the latest amendment one, amended one, but it's current, fairly current. This ordinance number is number 34, correct? This is number 34. The piece of paper that was just handed, and I don't know where, I didn't see this anyplace in my research, but neither, that's either here nor there. But the ordinance that was rejected by the Supreme Court was ordinance number 10, one zero. So one zero went away. One, ordinance number 10 went away totally. That was the zoning ordinance. Got replaced, and Delores Coffing signed the original of this document in January of Now, and here, let me digress again. Let's assume in 1996, but we don't have to assume, we know that this was a new document, original signature enacted in 1996. Could, by law, and this I'll have to refer to Jay, by law, could you put any date in this ordinance that preceded the date of enactment? This is what we're talking about, can you put any date? Said another way, anything that's existing prior to the date, effective date of the ordinance, is a non-conforming use. So irrespective of where that 82 date came from, and the date just happens to be the date that the folks way back in 92, April 28th of 1982, that's the date they signed ordinance number 10. Ordinance number 10 no longer exists. I can't even find a copy of ordinance 10. So when Jay says that must, must have been what they intended, I can't even find it. Does anybody have a copy?
Can, can I address that, George?
Please.
It doesn't matter that ordinance number 10 is gone. That's, that's where you're not understanding the law.
Excuse me, okay. Let him talk, George.
But what you said, okay, no.
Let him speak, please.
Go, go ahead.
It doesn't matter that ordinance number 10 is gone, it's what matters is what was validly approved in 96. The Supreme Court didn't throw out the language of 401. They threw out the ordinance because the ordinance was not adopted with a previously and validly adopted comprehensive plan. The Supreme Court didn't care what the language was, the document was not properly adopted. When the document finally got properly adopted, it had some of the same language. That's perfectly fine, there's nothing illegal about that. And yes, it can reference a prior date because it bestows more privilege, excuse me, more privileges on people. It didn't take away privileges. Of course, everything is grandfathered in, but they gave more rights than mere grandfathering. That's what you're not understanding.
Okay. You said, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you said that the commission back in 82 or somewhere back then intended for 82 to be the non-conforming. Grandfathering's not the right date, by the way, it's non-conforming. But that's what you said. Well, wouldn't it be wonderful if we could see ordinance number 10? I'd love, you know, I looked and looked and looked for ordinance number 10 to see what those folks signed on that date, and can't find it. So, so, so Jay, excuse me.
This is it.
This, is, is, is this ordinance?
That's the amendment to the ordinance.
This was ordinance number 10, two pages?
That's the amendment, read it.
In 1980, oh, now, hold it, 1982, these folks, if, if that's what their intent was, then it should have been written. Why, why, why can't we see a copy of that? This is a new document, the Supreme Court said start over. You can use the same, you can use the same words, sure. But, but was 1982 in ordinance number 10? That's the question. Was 1982 in ordinance number 10?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter what was in ordinance 10. That's long gone. It doesn't matter. It's immaterial. It's what's in that document, George.
This document, precisely so. This document was, was signed by Delores Coffing, the original copy, was signed by Delores Coffing in January of 1996. How could that have a date that preceded the signature date?
Our attorney has said you can do that. I guess, I don't know what law school you went to, but I know which one he did, and I would trust him.
It's called retroactive. You can't put a date preceding the, the assignment date or the enactment date, because that's called retroactive. It's called retroactive. You can't do that.
We did it.
Okay, I, I guess, I guess I'm, I'm going to have to be Francis Moore, and we'll run this sucker back up the flagpole.
Good.
Go for it. Good idea.
And this time, and this time, I don't know.
Get your checkbook out. Our attorney works cheaper in New York.
I don't know what Francis Moore got from the county, but I'll intend, I hope that liability insurance is paid.
All right, it is.
You, you go for it.
Okay. I want to make a motion, take a 10 minute break.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have a second?
What's that?
Take a 10 minute break. My philosophy is, is that our employees have probably had enough harassment. I know I have. Jay, you might want to listen to this. George just called Dan a rectal problem, and, and other, and other things, but I think it's time that he stops the harassment of county employees.
Well, I would sure agree.
And Nancy said that she looked into this one time, and there was a federal statute out there that she thinks that we can work on to put a stop to it.
For harassment.
And it's, it's time to stop. And I'm willing to do about anything I can to help out a constituent, but enough's enough. And we're spending, he's down there, we're harassing the planning department, he's, he's standing there, and people come up and want to get building permits, things like that. He jumps into the middle of the fracas and informs them what their rights are and...
I thought you stood up here earlier today and said something about he was in the military and trained to say ma'am or sir, and something like that, but apparently he didn't stick to that later.
Only to elders.
Yeah.
So, so I guess the, the request of the board would be to have the state's attorney's office work with the sheriff and see what statutes may be appropriately applied for harassing county employees. In general, by everybody, but this is precipitated by George Farabee's actions. And if you need that in a motion, I'd make that into a form of motion.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Can you move back the motion, please?
It's a long one, we're going, go ahead. Do you have it, Karen?
Holloway requested that state's attorney, state's attorney's office work with the sheriff's office to see what statutes can be applied to prevent the harassment of county employees.
Mr. Chair, may I offer a substitute motion to amend the agenda to address this, this subject, because I want to make sure it's legal for us to do that.
We should probably do that first. Do you think?
Yeah. So that is my, my...
I withdraw my second to the motion. And we'll do that first, and you made a motion, and I will second that motion also. And to amend the agenda today to include that item, is there discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Now, Don, if you want to...
My motion would be appropriate at this time.
Yes, sure will.
I'd repeat that motion.
Again?
Yep.
Moved by Holloway and seconded by, yet to be determined.
I did.
Ken.
That the Board of Commissioners requested that the state's attorney's office work with the sheriff to see what statutes can be applied to prevent the harassment of county employees.
Why don't you put in there that Holloway seconded this whole motion?
Okay.
Ken seconded it.
Yes, I did.
Shouldn't it be noted that it's per George's actions so that it is publicly recorded that this is why we're doing it?
Yeah, that'd be fine, add that to the motion. I think I did have it in my...
Yes, you did, on the first part. And that's okay by the second. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Thank you.
Now, that would be county employees, not necessarily county officials, is that...
So perhaps we should make a separate motion.
Well, I'm not worried about us. We have the authority to hold anyone in contempt in here, but I don't think, like Janet does have that authority, so...
Oh, yes, I can make a citizen's arrest.
Well, let's, let's let them work on it and come back with whatever their recommendation's going to be.
We can make a citizen's arrest.
I mean, I, when you guys work on that, I guess you can look at all of those aspects and come back and recommend to us.
And, you know, I can look into these matters, when somebody comes to me with a complaint, I can look into these matters without a, without a motion, frankly. But I, I, I'll, I'll say right now, and I'd say it again, whether I was in a courtroom or before this board, when a member of the public treats an employee of Pennington County disrespectful, my position has always been and it always will be, you are a human being first and you're a county employee second. You don't have to put up with that. You can hang up the phone, you can walk away. You don't have to deal with individuals like we experienced here today. Now, that individual may want to contact the President of the United States and Congress and the governor and everyone else involved and threaten to do so, fine, do it, and let's talk about it. And it might come before this board, but employees of the county are, they don't deserve that. They shouldn't have to put up with that. And that's always been my comment to any of them that have asked me, in my opinion, do we have to deal, do we have to put up with that harassment, that mistreatment? The answer is absolutely not. So I'll, I'll be the first to tell you, if somebody hangs up the phone on an individual like that or walks away from in the hallway out here or from the counter, you can blame me for that. Because that, that is my opinion, absolutely.
Well, I, I subscribe to that same belief.
Yep.
And, but what I, you know, what I'm hoping that you guys will be able to find is so that as, as, when we see something like that happen or something like happens, then, you know, we know what action can be taken, whether it's something that the sheriff would just make arrest on or whether there's a way to prevent him from continuing his...
Harassment.
...hurrying and tangling around here of everybody. But I, I, I agree, I agree that with you, you know, people don't have to put up with that, but I'd like to find out how we can deal with it.
And I'll work with the sheriff's office to, well, we'll try to come up with some information for you.
Thank you. Well, I want you to know that I've been putting up with that since 1990. That's when I first came on the planning commission.
Which refers back to 1982.
You want to study?
To adopt a date?
No, and I'm going to second my own motion too. Okay, I guess we're done with that item, now we're on to committee reports. Nancy, do you have?
I attended Community Health of the Black Hills. They are going to be having an open house this week, and I think we all got invitations to that to just, actually, they're just going to let us know what their new pediatrics unit looks like. It is not located on site, so it's kind of inconvenient in some ways, but it is the best they can do, so, kind of indicates how they'd like to bring everything into one kind of, or one particular location for everything. But if you can go, that would be great.
Okay. Don, do you have it in?
I attended a crisis care oversight meeting, and the crisis, they're, they're going to hold a, Vicarage is going to hold a meeting towards the end of August.
19th or 17th?
17th of August, a public meeting, and I think the board's going to, if they haven't already, will be getting invitation to that, to just bring everybody up to date on how that is operating out there and what the, what the goals are for the future.
17th or 19th, maybe, but it's only two days.
Okay. Anything else, Don?
No.
Don?
Next Wednesday and Thursday, I'll be in peer to the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board of Directors meeting. And one of the things they'll be discussing, I'm sure, is the new building that they're building, which the executive director has assured me will not increase our yearly payment to them. I'll find out more about that, because I said, we're not going to be in favor of doing that, if that's the case, so, we'll find out.
Okay. Anything else? Lindell?
I met with the Wheaton Pest Board last week, and one of the things that, quite a, quite a bit of what we saw today was part of that meeting, but I would share with you, and you probably already understand it, that we have a very, very capable Wheaton Pest supervisor who has the ability to coordinate with other agencies. The impact of his skill and dedication is not only restricted to Pennington County because it... because it reaches out into the Forest Service and other counties and we're just lucky to have him.
I agree.
I attended a fair board meeting recently, also a chamber board meeting. We also had an ag appreciation get together at the Ripken Ranch out southeast on Spring Creek Road and went very well. There was a lot of people. Great function. I was at the base of that. I think maybe I mentioned this last week when I was at the base when the troops came home. Tell you what, if you can't get emotionally charged about that, you've got to be pretty cold hearted. Those people, when they come home, 300 of them, meet their families and stuff, and they've been gone for six months to a year. What a situation. And the only, the only thing it can be any better is that they didn't have to go at all. The fair board, or in the fair, this next month on the 23rd, they're going to have a chamber mixer at the Coors tent on the fairgrounds. Also, the night of the 25th, I believe it is, is the Military Appreciation Night. And the military people, active duty, National Guard and the Air Force are invited to a pig roast at the fairgrounds. And then they also will have free tickets to the rodeo after that. Just that's about it. So now we need to go to the item 20, Pennington County budgets. Who's first?
Pick me, pick me.
What was that?
I said, pick me.
Fire away.
I just wanted to clarify. I made the decision to send out an email to ask all department heads to put together coal and merit numbers. And that was two commissioners asking me personally and then having two commissioners, I believe, ask it during our last public hearing that we did for budget hearings. So there were some questions from our auditor on why I sent that out and what direction it came from, so I just wanted to clarify that I made that decision because I felt it was in the best interest of everybody involved to have, the more information, the better. Also, what you have in front of you is two revised budgets, one from Janet Treasurer's Office and the State's Attorney's Office. And what we'll need today is motions to accept those new budgets as presented so Julie can include them in drafts going forward. And they are highlighted in orange at the bottom, so you'll see that they're drafts after the provisional approval. State's Attorney's Budget is less $63,000 that he had approached the board about prior and Janet's has reduced due to some personnel changes. And she's here to answer any questions if you have any.
What about, I know the sheriff had put in a reduced budget. Is that in?
I have not received a revised one from the sheriff's department yet.
Okay.
We spoke at that last meeting, said it would be willing to, I think it was $49,255 reduction or travel, but I don't think they were taking any formal action at that point.
No, and we can do that today and just.
Forty-nine thousand, what?
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five. I was just thinking that if we were going to make these three, or make these adjustments, make all three.
Make a motion for all three, correct?
I would move to accept these revised budget from the Treasurer's Office showing a reduction from the original request of $15,092. From the State's Attorney's Office showing a reduction from the original budget request of $63,000 and from the sheriff's law enforcement budget showing a reduction of $49,255.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, then a second for those three items, the budget reductions. Is there discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. Where else are we? Anything else, Holloway? Anybody else have anything they want to talk about?
And just to mention, I do have the conservation districts coming to our August 16th meeting in response to your questions from the last budget hearing as well, so they will be in attendance as well as Dakota Plains Legal Services for our indigent defense. They would like to come talk about their budget as well.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In regards to Dakota Plains.
Mm-hmm.
In the past, we have gotten a, a chart showing their caseload and it has had, at least, and I don't know what last year's figures are, but it had continually decreased. And I am not absolutely positive where that came from, whether it was.
There are.
Public defender or auditor, but it would be, I would like to see that when they come because I think it's important that as they ask for increases every year, their caseload goes down.
And they have supplied you with that information that it is in your.
I would rather have it be independent.
From another source.
Our source, showing what we actually turned over to them.
Okay. I will see what information I can find for you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I just have an informational item on my budget. You had asked that we look at talking to the Rapid City Journal about possibly combining charges with personnel and some of our, I have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. and that's going to be one of the, well, that's the main agenda item is we'll see what kind of deal they're getting us, if there's a better one. And so that might possibly reduce myself and Holly's budget, but I'll come back with a report on, it's our first meeting on that. It was the first time we could get together, so as we're going through, I just want to give you the heads up that I'm following through on a recommendation I don't remember which commissioner made at my budget hearing, so. No action to be taken, just an information.
Okay. Anything else?
I'm satisfied with the way the budget is, with these three changes that have been made.
There's a couple of things that I would like to talk about, and that's, the first one was, the first budget meeting we had, we took some money out of the court systems budget. And is that something we want to continue to do or? What's your thoughts about that?
What did we take out of it?
Let me think here. Asked for, looks like they asked for $819,468. And I believe the judge said. He didn't have any problem with $793,341.
Is that what's the revision for? Is that what it's got in it now?
No, actually, she shows it in here as 819,468 for the, this orange budget. So that is not what, what the judge.
Do you have an orange sheet for the courts?
Yeah.
I don't have one.
If you look on the Pennington County 2012 budget and it lists each one, the total for courts for 2012 is 819,468, but the judge said 793,341 was what he was comfortable with.
Okay, that's.
So we need to change that. You know. Should we have someone verify, should we have Holly verify those things back and forth? Because that was a good catch, Ken. I mean, we don't always catch those.
So, I mean, you don't want to, you don't want to just make the change now?
Well, I, my understanding is that that's what the judge said and I don't know why it was put in differently.
I think it'd be prudent to have Holly follow up on that.
With the judge?
Yes.
Okay. You'll do that, Holly? Okay.
So if, well, of course, I guess we're not going to, we're not going to be coming up with the final budget by next time anyway. All right.
I think we could still get through to the next commission meeting and still have plenty of time to adjust the numbers and stuff when they need to be.
I'd be willing to try to get ahold of Judge Davis if he wanted me to. I mean, I, no guarantee I'll catch him, but I could step out in the hallway and try.
If you want to give him a whirl, that's fine by me.
We got one more meeting in leave.
Yes.
We should do it.
The last one in August and then we have to have a, Holly, we have to have a public meeting advertised on the first meeting in September, correct? Okay. Right?
So you and Holly can pursue that with the court for next meeting?
Next meeting.
I, I'm just, Mr. Chair, maybe, do we, do we think then that all of these figures are what we originally?
Your orange, your orange, your salmon, excuse me, paper is what you approved for provisional?
Right, but given that there's a $26,000 difference in the courts, I mean.
Right, but that's minimal for your overall budget.
It is, but is there any others? I mean, that's my concern.
There will be others.
Okay.
And I have some more here that I would like to talk about. And one of them is, is that Whedon Pest was here today and if I remember right, he wanted the entire amount of Title III funds that's allocated to the county and I thought that was a little extravagant, even though I'm for taking care of all the bugs we can get. So.
By next time, could, Denny, could you, you're our Title III expert, could you give us a breakdown of old Title III, how much is in it, how much has been requested, new Title III? I mean, some of this stuff is old Title III that we need to get rid of by October or November. I mean, if he's asking for all of that, yeah, let's do it, but I guess I'm not familiar enough or smart enough to figure that out. Could you give us that breakdown? You know what I'm talking about.
I'll try and provide that to you, I'll say long before the meeting.
Okay.
It is a fair amount of info to kind of digest.
I would appreciate that. Thanks, Denny.
Try and do it before the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Another item I just want to bring up for conversation today, and I know Holly said that they were going to be here at the next meeting, but the East Pennington RC&amp;D, they've got two years' budget in the bank. And I don't know that we continue to supply money to any organization that has two years of budget in the bank. Now, whether there's some reason for it or not, that could be, I don't know. I'm just.
Does that include the Central State Fair?
Yeah, except they don't have near the outgoing the Central State Fair has. And they don't bring us in any money either. And the other, the other one, they have one year of budget in the bank.
Who's that?
The regular RC&amp;D, not the east one, East Pennington, but the other one.
It's balance sheet and stuff.
Denny, maybe you can tell me what this is, but you got minor equipment raised in your budget for $28,500. What is that? Can you tell me?
Can you give me a second?
You betcha. Okay, you're done.
Let me see if I can answer your question quickly here. Oh, okay. Part of that $28,000, I think is the number you had there, is for, we support the residential fire sprinkler trailer. Out of that, we help them with some, some ongoing costs. The Western Dakota Vo-Tech Fire Science Program, we help fund some of their purchases or some of their equipment they need for that, for fire, training of firefighters. It's part of our five-year plan for the fire departments to help them buy some personal protective gear, bunker gear, wildland gear. And I believe we had about $1,000 in there for, as part of the Federal Communications Commission's, we have to narrow band all our radios. We'll probably run into some, I'll say some expenses in converting all that to narrow band later this year, so, or maybe next year, so.
Right, then you have professional services of $5,400. Can you tell me what that is? Now, that could be a change from this salmon colored piece of paper. I don't know. We've had five or six.
Yeah, out of, well, I'm sorry. Out of professional services, part of that goes to the IT Department, Computer Department, for some of their services that they render to us for support of our computer systems. We, oh, about $3,000 or $3,500 of that is for, we pay a gentleman, we advertise, or we send out bids and ask for quotes to go out and service the 12 wildland trucks we bought here about five years, six years ago to get the compressed air foam system, make sure they're ready to go for the fire season, so.
And then the number, item number 495, CA equipment, $69,351.
Oh, capital, capital outlay items. Again, let me just, give me a second here to.
In 2010, it was 19,284, now 66.
What we're looking at, what the Fire Service Board is looking at for 2012 is we want to cost share two major purchases with the Rapid City Fire Department. One is what we call an accountability system. This is for when firefighters go into a structure. We know how many firefighters are in that structure and where they're at, and we want to make it compatible with the Rapid City Fire Department because we do an awful lot of mutual aid calls with the city and they do them with us, us meaning the volunteer departments. So we've set aside $25,000 for that. A good accountability system just in the county alone would probably be 25 to 50, so we're hoping to cost share that with them on there. The other item that we're looking at is what's called a driving simulator. About 25 firefighters every year die just driving to and from fire calls. And accidents on the road are a big cause of that, so we're trying to look at that in a cost share basis with Western Dakota Vo-Tech where you can get in a driving simulator and it will be very realistic as far as actually driving with red lights and siren, cars, people, traffic, what you see, and all that sort of stuff. So those are our two big purchase items for 2012 that we have in there. Does that answer your question? I hope, I mean.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask him something? So, Denny, is the source of that $60,000, is that from any, like, Title III or anything?
No. No, none of that would probably qualify for Title III. If we tried to use Title III funds, I'm afraid we'd be in such a convoluted justification as to how much to allocate towards that. So, the other item I forgot in there is we put some money aside for a matching grant under the Assistance to Firefighters program for pagers for the fire department, so.
Kay, Hiney still here? I'd mind, you know. I didn't mind, you know?
Thank you.
We have a seven hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollar increase in, in road and bridge. And something to realign fourteen sixteen. And then I also had a question mark about what we were gonna do with Big Sky Roads, and I think that's something we need to look at at the next meeting. I think we get Heine here and talk about the Big Sky Road deal and what the city's gonna do and what we need to do. Are we thinking about something different for ITS, the Information Technology Service, of a new manager and additional money for that, that budget? Something I think we need to talk about before this is over with. Public defenders, I noticed they have a thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollar increase, and I guess I'd like to know why that is. And when, the motion was made the other day to, to approve the preliminary budget, did that include twenty-five thousand for economic development, or did that just include ten thousand for economic development? That's, there's a change in the sheets? Rapid City, Pennington County, yep. Ten thousand total budget. I know what the situation is there with the TIFs and the TIDS and all of that stuff, and how much revenue that the county loses, but I'd sure hate to lose any economic development that those people are putting together for the entire county. And I just wonder if that's something we should reconsider. It'll, that's the last, never the next meeting that we have. That's basically about all I have. Oh, what about the wall request for more money? Did that get taken out of their budget? At four hundred and thirty-two dollars or whatever it was they wanted?
I believe you would get that back.
Okay. And that's something you might want to get together with Holly about. And look at some faction figures that she has that, that are sent into the state for library budgets. One thing I'd like to bring up, and maybe I don't have all the answers to it, it was told to us on the very first budget meeting that we had that the money that the Central States Fair was requesting, that if we gave them all of that money, that there'd have to be an opt-out of the tax freeze for that Central States Fair budget. And I'm not saying that I'm gonna want to give them any more money, because I don't, but I just want to clarify that I believe that the mill levy was not maxed out by any means for the Central States Fair, and I don't think there's any reason why we would have to opt-out of the tax freeze when the mill levy did not increase, but could increase, without going over the cap. So I think that's something we need to think about. That's all I have. Anything else from anybody?
You were saying on economic development, there was ten thousand, and then there's five thousand for Black Hills Vision, is that what it is?
There's ten thousand for Black Hills Vision, there's fifteen thousand for the Ellsworth Task Force, and there's ten thousand for Rapid City Economic Development, for a total of thirty-five thousand.
And if I remember right, we gave Black Hills Vision their full request for the year, and also the Ellsworth Task Force, but we cut economic development by fifteen thousand.
They requested twenty-five initially, and we cut them back to last year's level, to about ten thousand.
Okay, what were you approved with for draft four, right?
No, draft five. Look at the salmon ones.
The salmon one?
Yes.
That's not in the-
But I thought, I thought draft four come in. Okay, you're right, sorry. Well, probably before we get this done in September, we'll have a couple more drafts.
Yeah, I wouldn't doubt it.
And if you guys want me to clear out previous drafts?
I guess I'm gonna have to have you do that, because I'm very confused with all of this stuff.
It's just some of you have writing on previous drafts that I didn't want to get rid of.
Yeah, I don't want you to take mine out, because I've got lots of notes in there, and as soon as that's gone, then my brain went with it.
That's what I, I don't want mine taken on either.
Anything else, as far as the budget? Nobody wants to cut the sheriff's budget by a hundred thousand? Nobody wants to cut the Treasurer's Office and registered deeds?
Are you gonna share that with us, what you've got in mind?
He is. How about a motion to adjourn? No, we don't, can't adjourn, we gotta go into the executive session.
Give people a little bit of a heads-up on where you're headed with this?
Well, I'm not, haven't made up my mind yet. Before, next week, you'll have plenty of time, hopefully.
Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I had a whole list of stuff, and most of that's been changed.
I will make that motion.
Okay, and it's Department Ed, Performance, and Personnel. And that's the one, did we get it, was it okay with Jay to go into executive session for that item? Okay?
Is it being evaluated?
Say again.
Is it being evaluated?
We postponed that until the next commission meeting because of the linked things, and Mike Peterson had to make sure that the air conditioner was running.
Is there a valuation? Was there a second for that motion for executive session?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to go into the executive session for two items, discussion. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried.